Good afternoon. I called to order our afternoon work session. At this time, may we have council session, I'm sorry. It's been a long day already. We had a work session earlier. A call to order our afternoon council session. Mayor McFarlane is excused. Invitation by Pastor Santingo? Come forward. Santiago.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming all out. They all came today.
They all came for you.
Just for the prayer. So thank you for the opportunity. When my wife and I moved here seven years ago, we knew that this was the place that we're going to call home for a very long time. So thank you. Let's pray. Father, we're grateful for your presence here today. Thank you for this beautiful weather outside. Thank you for sending your son Jesus to die on a cross, save us of our sins. Thank you for all the business at hand. I pray that every detail, everything that's specific that has to be handled today, that it would be handled in such a way that would please you. Thank you for a great city, a great state, and a great country. I pray that you would be with us as we go about our day. Thank you for those that serve this city, those in law enforcement, those in public service, those in government. I pray you would protect them, protect their families. May your grace shine upon us every single day. We love you, and it's in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Cox, please sign the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one certificate of appointment for today. Will Reverend Taylor, Pastor Taylor, please come forward? He has been appointed to the Stormwater Management Advisory Commission. Want to thank you for your service and look forward to your great incitement as we move forward in this city.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Anything you would like to say?
It's an honor to serve as a seventh-generation North Carolinian. I would a blessing to be here today and also glad to be a part of the Stormwater Commission, considering that St. Ambrose, the church where I serve, is really at the intersection of race, environmental racism, and environmental justice. So glad that my voice will be a part of this commission. Thank you.
All right. We did not have any pool consent items. It's been moved and properly second for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to our planning commission report.
Good afternoon. We'll start with a quick review of what's currently calendared for public hearings in the future. You have four items on the June 4 evening public hearing, including the budget hearing for fiscal year 2020 and two zoning cases and a comp plan amendment. Nothing calendared for the mid-month afternoon hearing on June 18th and one item on July 2nd. So we'll start with the first zoning case. This is a reprise of a case that you had seen before on Freedom Drive, south of New Bern Avenue, outside the Belt Line. It's approximately 17 acres. And the request is to rezon from a combination of CX3 and R6 to IX3CU. There was a split vote at the Southeast CAC on this item, but the planning commission was unanimous in recommending approval on a six to zero vote. And if approved, there will be a associated future land use map amendment that will change this tract to business and commercial services. I believe staff had originally recommended hearing this on July 2nd. We do understand that some applicants today would like to be heard earlier than that. And whatever the council's pleasure is, fine with staff.
All right. I received the same requests. They're asking for either the 4th or the 18th for this session. We know we already have two zoning cases. There's two more scheduled, which this would be five along with a public hearing on that day. So what's the pleasure of the body? Feel okay with having this one on the same day on the 4th?
Can we not move it to the next one?
To the 18th?
Yeah. It's a lot on that case.
18th?
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Motion to move to the 18th.
Second. All right. It's been moved and probably second for June 18th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same right. Motion carries.
Next case, Z119. It's a request to rezon a little over 12 acres from R4 to R10, conditional use, found to be consistent with the conference of plan and land use map. Planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval. And the Northwest CAC also voted to recommend approval with 11 in favor, zero against, and three abstentions. We've suggested a public hearing date of June the 4th.
Okay.
Does that include the number you just listed?
Yeah, that included the number I listed.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same right. Motion carries.
Okay. So TC319, it's a text change, simply codifying the development fee schedule. There are no changes to the associated fees. This is simply a technical cleanup item. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval and should be a short item to add to your public hearing on June 4th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve for June 4th public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Zoning case, Z919. Request to rezon approximately six acres near the intersection of Pool Road and Sunny Brook from R6 to NX3 conditional use. This is also consistent with the plan, conference of plan and land use map, unanimous approval, recommendation for approval from the planning commission, and also recommendation from the Southeast CAC on a 16 in favor to opposed vote. And we've also suggested a public hearing date of June 4th.
Was that included in the suggestion? Motion to approve?
It's been moved and properly second for a public hearing date of June 4th. All in favor, say aye. Those against have the same right. Motion carries.
All right. And then lastly is another text change. This is the second of the bundle of omnibus items that had been reported out of growth in natural resources and have now gone through the planning commission. This is some use-related clarifications, one of which is to permit breweries, wineries, distilleries, and cideries as a principal use in the DX district under certain conditions, to modify the requirements for remote parking facilities, and to clarify restrictions related to produce stands. Unanimous recommendation from the planning commission to approve. And we have suggested a hearing of June 4th.
Motion to approve?
It's been moved and properly second for June 4th public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, same right. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll move to our special items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Protem, members of council, as they're getting that material ready, I just wanted to introduce this item. As you may recall, the city council had asked the staff to conduct a benchmark study looking at other jurisdictions associated with police oversight boards and groups. We also, you also asked us to give you some options and analysis for your consideration. Staff is here today to present the results of that review. I'll ask Marshall Adams David, Assistant City Manager in our office, to kick it off, and then she'll introduce the other speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and City Council. We are excited to bring back the staff report to you that you all asked us to provide last year. And today's presentation will include a high-level written report of what research we have found over the last 12 to 14 months of our research. We will also have a presentation provided by Dr. Audria Caesar, who is the Executive Director of our Human Relations Commission. And what her report will entail will be a further deeper dive into what our research showed us. And we will close out the presentation with the police perspective provided by Chief Cassandra Deck Brown. So just on a high level, what we found. What we found is that there is no one model that fits every community. Community dynamics change depending upon where you are geographically, depending upon what your socioeconomic status is, depending upon your population. But what we did find is there are some best practices that are utilized across the country. However, the most effective organizations tend to be more responsive with best fit as opposed to best practices, because we tend to try to create models that will work for us, not what necessarily works for our neighbors. So you will see in the staff-written report a high-level view of what communities we looked at inside North Carolina and what communities we looked at outside of North Carolina. And so with that, I will turn it over to Audria Caesar, who will give a PowerPoint presentation. And each of the three of us will avail ourselves to you at the end of the presentation for questions that you might have. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of council.
Good afternoon.
So, most of the larger cities in North Carolina have some form of a review board. What we're going to do today is highlight some of the key features of those boards. And we also want you to understand that we've considered other cities. So there are several peer cities throughout the country that have been looked at. And based upon what we've found, North Carolina has four major cities that have review boards that we should consider. With Raleigh being almost half a million people, I would say that this is a great opportunity for us to look at a variety of options and that there are some boards that function differently. But to Marshall's point, we need to look at best fit for the city of Raleigh. For the city of Charlotte, under the Community Relations Division, they have a citizens' review board. And the review board serves to do two things. It reviews appeals by citizens who are dissatisfied with the outcome of a prior disposition. And this board also serves in an advisory capacity. And the advisory capacity is reporting to the chief of police, the city manager, and the city council. This group also makes periodic reports that explore trends that they see related to police issues. And it has 11 members, and they serve three-year terms with a two-term max. And there are two staff resources. In Winston-Salem, the board serves as a fact-finding body for unresolved citizen complaints against the police department. So this group is not necessarily dealing with appeals, but they're focusing on unresolved complaints. The mayor recommends appointees, and all appointments are made by city council. The role of the police review board in Durham is to determine if an investigation was conducted properly. And if it was, then there's no further action. But if the board feels like further action is needed, then they will hold a hearing. This board does not meet regularly. In fact, they've only met a couple of times in the past couple of years and tend to agree with the decisions that have been made by the Internal Affairs Department. In Greensboro, the police community board is comprised of volunteers. They are appointed by city council and also the chair of the Human Relations Commission. They are tasked with reviewing and assessing the findings of Greensboro's Police Department Professional Standards Division. So now I'm going to go through three options for Raleigh. We've seen police review boards throughout the state of North Carolina. But the first is a police oversight board, and that is a full enforcement power board. The second is primarily a police review board. And then the third is a new option, and it's the Office of Citizen Advocacy. It's an internal office focused at looking at police complaints. Complaints can be initiated two ways. The first way is through an appeal. So if the person has already gone through the Internal Affairs review process and has received a response, they have 30 days to appeal that response. Or they can file a new complaint. In some cases where individuals do not feel comfortable going to the police department, they can file this new complaint with any of the three options that I'm going to speak about. The new complaint must be filed within 15 days of the incident. The first model that I'm going to talk about is the police oversight board. This board has investigatory power, and that's a tough word to say, investigatory power, and disciplinary action. And the focus is to conduct investigations of citizen complaints and internal affairs appeals. Again, this is full enforcement. So they take testimony under oath, investigate the effectiveness of the Raleigh Police Department practices, policies, and procedures, and they weigh in on disciplinary action and have subpoena power. This is probably the most robust board of the three options. The police review board focuses on case review and recommendations. This is the model that we see across the state of North Carolina. This closely mirrors the board that currently exists within the city of Charlotte. But this board reviews evidence presented, recommends case action to the Raleigh Chief of Police and City Manager. And on an annual basis, they present a report to city council outlining the trends and actions taken by the board. There's also a community engagement component with this model. So in addition to reviewing cases, this board will actually go out in the community and sell the idea that you have a way to complain. If you have an issue that hasn't been resolved, you can bring your issues to this board, and we will hear your case. Now, for the first two boards that I've outlined, there's a decision-making process. And the idea is that the board will come to consensus. However, if consensus is not reached, then majority vote with 80% agreement will be initiated. Recommendations will be presented to the Raleigh Chief of Police, City Manager, and presented during public meetings. There are two levels of recommendations that the boards can make. First is a Level 1 recommendation. It's either the complaint is substantiated, unsubstantiated, there's a policy failure, or not enough information exists to assess. The Level 2 recommendation exists only if an allegation is substantiated. And at that time, the board will make recommendations to the chief of police and the city manager. This third option, which is a newer option, is an internal office housed in human relations. Residents may initiate an appeal or renew a complaint, just like the other two boards. And the investigations will be conducted by internal ombudsman and legal staff. The ombudsman will share findings with the chief of police and city manager, along with providing a technical assistance report to identify opportunities to improve. Some significant points to consider. To have disciplinary authority granted to a body outside of the city would lead to repeal of the Civil Services Commission to govern. Full enforcement option requires a local act, which would need a bill sponsor to sign off on it. Lack of confidentiality of case materials could potentially compromise any ongoing investigations and then limited access to investigation materials such as body-worn camera footage. North Carolina state statute prevents the release of employee personnel data. Coordinated discipline would be difficult to achieve, particularly in situations where disciplinary action has already come down and decisions have been made. If an individual has already been disciplined, it would be very difficult to overturn that. Limited access to investigation materials. And then again, staff would have limited access to investigate because of internal affairs investigations. Pros. The major pro for having a board is that it responds to the community's request, and it also provides an alternative to internal affairs within the police department. One of the things that residents have stated is that they want more transparency, and this option provides that. Pros for the Office of Citizen Advocacy is that it provides full-scale customer service and timely follow-up. So the way that it would work is that, once a complaint comes in, it has 24 hours to be assigned to an ombudsman and 48 hours for that ombudsman to subsequently contact the person who has the request. This process would be coordinated with internal affairs, as same as the two processes we've seen earlier for initiating a complaint. So if you have an appeal or a new complaint, that new complaint will still be coordinated with internal affairs, and a parallel process will begin. But all of the interaction will be on the side of the Office of Citizen Advocacy. This office would also track data and release information via the website, and also utilizing our Human Relations Commission. Those meetings are a great opportunity to share some of the information that this board finds and then providing police technical assistance. Some of the cons for the boards is that it must be approved by North Carolina General Assembly. This strains the relationship between the police and the community. And then final case dispositions and disciplinary actions rest with the board. Board members must have some level of expertise in law and/or community or police relations. And then there's some costs associated with additional staff resources which would be required. Overall, case studies suggest that full review boards are ineffective. Some cons for the Office of Citizen Advocacy. It does not provide resident engagement in the review process. Internal processes tend to lack transparency that the community desires, and the cost of additional staff resources and a slower startup time will take place due to training and hiring. There will also be time, or will take time, to coordinate the roles and responsibilities of the police department and the staff. Appointments and qualifications. So this board would consist of 10 seats. Seven would be city council appointments. One would be a mayoral appointee. The city manager would have an appointee. And then the chief of police would have an appointee. Appointees would serve a three-year term with a maximum of two terms, and terms will be staggered. The application process is similar to the existing one for any other board and commission. Anyone wishing to apply may visit the boards and commissions page on the Raleigh website to complete the interest form. Anybody who isn't appointed must complete Citizens Police Academy, legal training, and board orientation. Training should be completed every two years, and that's just so that the board stays up on changes in policies, procedures, and practices. In order to qualify, you must be 21 years of age, a registered voter, current on city taxes, and you must also complete a background check. Disqualifications are current and former city of Raleigh employees, family members of current and former Raleigh police officers, and we're defining family member as a spouse, child, parent, or sibling. And the final disqualification would be any previous felony conviction. So next steps. So based upon what we heard from council, we've put together some options here. The first is to explore a hybrid model between the Office of Citizen Advocacy and also a three-to-five-person community board. The second option would be an enhanced internal affairs process. That's taking a deep-dive look at the current process and finding opportunities to improve it. And then the third option is a community engagement process to obtain resident feedback. Again, this would be a great opportunity to engage our Human Relations Commission to be a part of engaging the community on this topic. And I will take any questions if you have them.
First of all, excuse me. First of all, thank you for the presentation, the work, and the information that you provided. And definitely, as far as the next steps, looking at a possible hybrid between option 2 and option 3, where you have the staff and also you have the community engagement piece. But also personally, you know, taking a deeper dive and looking at the internal affairs process and see if there's ways to improve that and enhance it. And I definitely believe whatever decision is finally made, there needs to be some type of community engagement before that decision is made. That is my input as of right now. Any other counselors?
Yes. So would you walk us through the current procedure if a complaint is made?
For internal affairs?
Well, anyone that has a complaint against our police department, or an officer. Would the chief be better suited to answer this?
Yes.
Okay.
I couldn't hear your question, sir.
I'm sorry. Would you walk us through the current procedure for, when someone makes a complaint against one of our officers?
The internal affairs procedure?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. First of all, complaints and inquiries come by many avenues into the department for an internal affairs investigation. Sometimes it comes through your office by way of email. We have individuals who walk in to our department. I get phone calls as well. So they come in through a number of sources. At the point, our Internal Affairs Office is made aware of any complaint or any allegation against the officer or any other police employee, the investigation begins. It is a rigorous investigation that includes making contact with any and all individuals who are witnesses, who are the recipients of that action alleged by the officer. And lastly, the employee is the last person to be interviewed. They basically take two different routes. One is, it could be an administrative investigation, or it could be a criminal investigation. Typically, the only time we bring to light with regards to the criminal side of investigations is usually when it's an officer-involved shooting or an in-custody death. But in the event there is an allegation against the officer that still rises to the level of a criminal allegation, that too gets investigated. And once those, Internal Affairs is literally the facts and findings entity within the organization. Once the facts and findings have been identified, then the review in terms of the disciplinary piece of that rises to the level of the chief's office and the major who has oversight in the Internal Affairs Office. If it is a criminal investigation of any kind, that investigation goes to the District Attorney's Office for further review to determine whether or not it rises to the level of charges. It may not rise to the level of a charge, however, the separate part of that is the administrative component that allows us to identify if, in fact, any policy or procedures have been violated within the organization. And if they have, then discipline is administered. Once discipline is administered, and once the case itself is complete, we do notify the complainant, and we advise them of the outcome, whether or not the case is sustained or not sustained, if there is a policy failure, or if it's unfounded altogether. And sometimes, the incident does not rise to a complaint, be it administrative or criminal. Sometimes people just need a moment to understand why the officer did what he or she did with an explanation of what policy and procedure, and sometimes law, allows. In those instances, we are basically speaking about a contact.
Okay. So do you have any statistics on how many response calls our department made last year and how many complaints were made?
I do, and I would, at some point, like to just offer my response to the presentation that was also given. So if you will allow me to do that, I will actually speak to the calls for service and all of that.
Please go ahead, Chief.
Thank you. Well, first of all, as the Chief of Police in our capital city, and we are the forty-second largest department, I think it's important to also note that we are an accredited department. And that is no easy feat, and it does not come lightly. And we have been an accredited department for twenty-seven years. Accreditation in our organization is a voluntary status. Not every police department across the United States or within our own state is an accredited agency. In essence, we impose on ourselves to be a best-practicing agency. Every three years, assessors from CLEA, which is the Commission on the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies, comes to our department, looks into our files, and reviews all policies and procedures. We could lose our accreditation if we are not complying. We currently maintain over three hundred and fifty national professional standards. So we are holding ourselves accountable to a significant degree. To answer your question, Mr. Thompson, in two thousand and eighteen, the Raleigh Police Department had three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred police and community interactions. Nine-one-one calls amounted to a hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and three of those incidents. Self-initiated calls, and that's basically those calls that did not rise to a nine-one-one call, where the officer took it upon him or herself to check on the welfare, visit a school. It's a combination of different levels of citizen engagement. That amounted for one hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-one encounters and interactions. And traffic stops amounted to forty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-six interactions. Of those, three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred incidents, a total of forty-nine internal affairs complaints were generated in two thousand and eighteen. Twenty-six were from citizens and residents, and twenty-three were internally generated. And it's important that I note that because we're almost talking about half of the data. It's important because it is the expectation of each of us to police ourselves as well. Within your police department, personnel are encouraged to speak up when they see something and to say something. In two thousand and eighteen, of those three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred police and community encounters, there were three hundred and seventy-nine use-of-force incidents in our department. That is force that was used in zero-point-one-zero-two percent of the three hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred calls for service, or not just calls for service, but including a traffic stop. Of that number, twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty-five physical arrests were made. Force was used in two-point-nine-five-five percent of those incidents. And use of force includes everything from soft hands all the way up to, on our continuum, to the use of a firearm. While parallel investigations were offered as an option during the presentation, the role of Internal Affairs does not disappear because of the many, or the various complaints and inquiries that simply come in by way of a phone call, a walk-in, my office, your office, or by some other means. Because of the functions that also fall under Internal Affairs, which includes inspections, accreditations, audits, and other functions that collectively fall under the greater heading of professional standards, they must continue. There were recommendations for the ability to discipline as well. And beyond the legislative concerns that were previously mentioned, I am concerned about the degree of information that is or is not based on North Carolina general statute, one sixty A, one sixty-eight. As an agency that follows the model of progressive discipline, it is important to take the employee's history into account when discipline is administered or recommended as well. I am the first to say that we're not a perfect organization. We're not a perfect department, and neither do we claim to be. But we strive very hard to recognize our shortcomings and to work to overcome them. With an introduction of the body-worn cameras, I did present with the request for same, but with a reminder that even the body-worn cameras would not be the total solution, the be-all, the end-all. As such, several releases of our videos have shown that we have demonstrated our efforts to be transparent, even when the allegations were very different. The Citizens Review Board won't be the be-all, end-all either. And part of that is simply because police, like all of you and everyone else in here, we're human. I must ask, at what point does performance become so restricted that officers simply cannot do their jobs? They are the ones running towards danger at the risk of their own lives. In one of the reports given earlier, it was also stated that Citizens Review Boards are ineffective. Trust works both ways. When we talk about accountability, our community has an obligation to be accountable and responsible for their actions as well. At some point, we will have to have the critical and the crucial conversations beyond Citizens Review Boards and traffic stops to speak to something that is much greater than individual agendas, and that is the common thread that binds each of us in this room. A safe community. Quality of life, and in some instances, the necessity for the enhanced quality of life. Fair and equitable treatment on both sides of that encounter, and life as a universal value that we all have and must respect. In closing, oversight comes from each of you. As Chief of Police of the Raleigh Police Department, I am not in favor of an oversight board for the very reasons and beyond the reasons that have articulated here today. But should you choose to employ a Citizens Review Board on any level, the men in Raleigh, the men and women of the Raleigh Police Department do not reflect a closed-minded police department. We are a forward-moving and a progressive police department. And I believe that it's important that you know, and our citizens know, that whatever your choice is, we will continue to be the professionals that we are called to be in this most dangerous and rigorous work that we do every day. And not only do we do it because we believe that we are called to do it, but we will do it because our desire is to strive to be the best professionals that we can be at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Counselors? Very complex subject. Talk to the mic.
Complex subject, and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing on this. I get a sense there's sort of three levels of interaction here. One is, that the low level is review to look at policy changes. Next is some sort of discipline, and then above that, there's criminal activity potentially. So it seems like the District Attorney's Office will be in charge of any charges of criminal activity, and so that really wouldn't, would that be in the purview of any of these review? So it would just be in the realm of either discipline or policy improvements, right?
Right. The focus of these boards will be to review the appeals and/or new complaints of citizens or residents, and then to assess the findings to determine those same levels, if the findings were substantiated, unsubstantiated, policy review, or not enough information.
So on one of the slides, it talked about the role of Civil Service Commission. Seems like, again, they don't get involved at the level of criminal activity. Do they get involved at the level of discipline and policy?
The bullet point stated, and I can go back there, that if we choose to allow any other body other than Raleigh PD to be involved, that we would have to get Civil Service Commission approval, and that's not going to happen. That would essentially repeal our commission involvement.
So I guess, just to make sure I understand the statement, are you saying now the Civil Service Commission serves in the role as reviewing disciplinary and policy changes?
The Civil Service Commission serves as the last step in the continuum of an appeal process that we have. So employees can appeal through the Department Director, up to the City Manager's Office, and once that decision is rendered, covered employees have the option to go to the Civil Service Commission. What the investigatory board would then do is take away the need for the Civil Service Commission to act in that role, so therefore repealing their role over public safety.
To what I think I heard you, so let's talk about, so discipline and policy. So Civil Service Commission hears appeals by employees of the city?
Yes.
They don't hear requests by citizens, right?
No.
Okay. So, but they, do they also hear requests for policy changes?
Yes, for those policies that affect paid disciplinary actions, they go to Civil Service.
Okay. But again, those come from employees, not from citizens.
Or it may come generated from a policy revision process. You may recall several of the policies that we updated over the last six to eight months. We took them to the Civil Service Commission to be reviewed before we brought them to council for approval.
But their involvement really is tied to policies about employment and employee grievances. It's not about policies outside of employment or disciplinary actions outside of employee appeals. So there is, seems like there is some room there for addressing citizen concerns along discipline and policy change items. So I guess I'm interested in knowing more about all of the options that you've presented here. Certainly interested in hearing what the citizens of Raleigh think. But I do think it is important that they understand the distinction between things that fall under the District Attorney, things that fall under the Civil Service Commission, and things that then, I guess, currently now are strictly within Internal Affairs. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Branch, I have a question. As it relates to the Police Oversight Board, do we have any other peer cities in North Carolina that currently have that? And if we do, how did they acquire that? And if they've tried and have failed, had whatever attempts been made?
Currently, there are no communities in the state of North Carolina that have the Oversight Board. There have been a couple of communities that have requested of the General Assembly, but there has been no decision handed down. So they're currently, the four larger municipalities that we researched, they have the review body, not oversight.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, that requires legislative action as well.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Just the comment, the write-up says, "In response to requests from many community groups." I'm not sure who those groups are, but I can tell you from District A, I have not heard from any group asking for this. So maybe we, I'm not saying I'm against, I'm certainly open to looking at this, but I think we really need to see where this focus is really coming from.
Fair enough. So is there a process you're thinking about now, about taking this out to the broader community over all the city to get feedback from them? Or is that direction that you would need from us?
That is the direction we're hoping to get from council, and we will develop a process and then communicate it back in the way of a manager's update to, once we would secure facilities, if that's what you would like for us to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Before we go there, I've got some thoughts.
Sure.
Love to share and just kind of talk amongst ourselves if we can.
Yeah.
To some extent. I really want to lift up something Chief said that really struck me, which is, I feel like we need to pause and talk about our similarities. This conversation has, you could cut the tension in here with a knife right now. And so to recognize that our focus on now a variation of a set of tools has kind of put us in this situation where it's one side versus the other. And this is such a dense topic, it's worth digging into as a group. And I think it's worth first having a hard conversation that allows us to take a step back and talk about what our goals are here. It strikes me that we've been focusing on the variations of one possible solution without really discussing what the problem is we're trying to solve. We've heard a lot of, "We need this." We've heard a lot of, "We need this, we need this, we need this." But I think for the sake of this conversation, our goals are no more deaths at the hand of the police, police accountability, more transparency, and improved community-police relations. And I think once we get our head around what are our shared goals, we can really start to dig into what are the solutions, instead of starting from a solution piece. And if we don't agree on those goals, then I don't know how we're ever going to get to solutions. So I want to throw that out first and see, we're having this conversation, so let's have it.
So the clarity is, what goals are we, what are we trying to solve? And what are the goals we would like to do to get to a solution?
Right.
That the community, all the community feels like they need.
All of Raleigh. Yeah. Yeah.
One of the things that I've often hear is transparency. You know, that's the, I guess, sometimes I want to think it's almost a catchphrase because it can mean so many different things to so many different people. I think one of the ways that we get to that point, to your question, is through that community engagement on looking at these options based upon that feedback. Because, you know, we have three options, and then really, there's a fourth here where you talk about explore a hybrid between two options. And then, you know, there's the fifth option, which the, you know, I hear from the chief is to do nothing. You know, that's everything that's been stated today. And hearing all of that, I definitely feel, and hearing Councilman Thompson's statement as well, is making sure we have a holistic Raleigh conversation on this topic for us to effectively, I believe, move forward.
I think, you know, the statistics that the chief shared with us are very compelling, the small number of incidents and things like that. But on the other hand, we have, you know, people who have died, and so I think trying to balance out those two things is, is very difficult. I, you know, I would be open to getting more information from the entire community about what their goals are for us as a community in terms of, you know, relationships between our residents and between the police. And I think it would also be helpful to have more conversation among ourselves. I don't know if we need to form a committee of the whole to deal with this in more detail. I'm not sure what steps, what order those steps should be in, but clearly, we need to do something, I think.
Okay. Any other?
Well, I'll just add my comments that I think, for me, the primary goal is safety. At the end of the day, everyone on both sides of the badge want to be able to go home alive and safe, on both sides of the badge. And I have said this before to various people, I come from an industrial background, and in industry, we do put together groups of people to review safety procedures and policies and try to come up with ways to ensure that people are safe. And I certainly am open to that possibility. There's another line here that we're hearing about, and that is accountability. And of course, we do have procedures in place through Internal Affairs and the District Attorney's Office that do deal with accountability. But I think we need more discussion about where we go with that and what the possibilities are. So I do support the rest of the counselors in seeking a solution by engaging the community further and having a wider conversation about this.
All right. So I'm hearing a consensus of going forward with that community piece. And then also, I want to just add something else to, we talk about a review board and the way, you know, review board, Internal Affairs, I see them acting because something happened. I think part of the conversation is too, is also exploring, because I know our officers do a great job of being proactive and engaging in the community and seeing if there are other tools that we can bring to bear on the front end to try to, you know, prevent as much as possible. And I do know, we asked at the last council meeting, even from the mental health standpoint, of finding out, know the tools and resources from the county that they have. So I think as much time and energy we're putting on what do we do if something happens, my question is, how can we prevent it from happening as much as possible? And is there more can we do to prevent anything from happening?
Exactly. Exactly. I agree with that.
So is that, do you feel clear on the direction from council?
We will bring back, through a manager's update, design a process for community engagement over the next week or so.
Okay.
Give us a little bit to secure facilities and locations so that, and then the opportunity to publicize it as well.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you know, the other thing would be, you know, I just want to say, I appreciate the job that our police officers do every single day, protecting everyone in this room in this city.
Yes.
Putting your life on the line out there. None of us at this table, I believe, have ever been confronted with a person with a gun in their hand or a knife that has failed to respond to commands to stop. So we don't really know what that's like. But it's not a Raleigh problem, it's a national problem. And it's not just police, it's also the people that are getting hurt for other reasons. So I look forward to us, and I'm sure we can as a council, work together and look forward to your comments when y'all come back from your community engagement.
And when we talk about community engagement, I'm hoping that means our police officers as well, and getting input from them about what would, what they think would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Yep. Mr. Branch, if I could, make two additional comments in relation to that. First is, I also wanted to give my thanks to the staff that worked on the report and to Councilmember Stewart's comments. This is a difficult topic, so let's just acknowledge the importance and the difficulty of it. The staff with the manager's office and with community engagement, as well as the Raleigh Police Department, worked together to try to bring this together. I also want to take a moment to specifically thank Chief Deck Brown and her leadership on this difficult subject.
Thank you, Chief.
Her and the entire Raleigh Police Department staff, all the way down to the officers, do have a very difficult job, and I appreciate their openness to this conversation, recognizing the difficult job that they do. So I just wanted to make my own statement of support for the police chief and her folks. What I would suggest, a little bit different perhaps than Ms. Adams-David, is that we bring back to you a presentation of what the community engagement process would look like, and that way, we're transparent about what we're about to do, and so that we can get some endorsement and clarity on what those steps would be. And if council would like to offer some tweaks to that, then we can do that. So we will put that on a future, I don't know which meeting, but we will put that on a future agenda to review with you, if that's okay.
Okay. Any other comments?
Chief, did you have something to say?
First of all, thank you for your comments, Mr. Manager. And I would just say, Mayor Pro Tem, that it is not that I suggest that we do nothing. We are a department, as I closed with, who are very, we are very open-minded, and we strive to be the best that we can be. So I did not say that we do nothing. I said that I was not in favor of a police oversight board. And whatever you choose to do, you will continue to see the professionalism of the men and women in blue here in the city.
And Chief, I apologize for taking your words out of context.
Thank you all.
We knew what you meant.
So just, I just want to endorse the comments that I've heard from Councilor Stewart and others about making sure that we do define the goals so that we really understand what we're trying to accomplish here, and it, obviously, it's great to see what the best practices are, and you assume that many other communities have the same goals in mind that we might, but it would be good for us to very clearly state what actually we here in Raleigh are trying to accomplish. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
All right. Our next item.
So this, again, special items, but I'll do the introduction, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. This is a follow-up on the Civic Campus Project Phase One, Design Services and Construction Manager at Risk. These two items are before you this afternoon. As you recall, we had originally presented to you the Civic Campus Project in March for the selection of the design firm. Council members had some questions, and that was very certain, very much appropriate, and so we spent some time sharing detailed information with you, and we're bringing that back before you today. One thing to mention, there are two items for your approval today, so we will mention the design contract again, but we'll do a second recommendation related to the Construction Manager at Risk. This is a large, complex project, has multiple points of approval. And so Priscilla Williams from Engineering Services is here to remind you of the first piece and introduce the second, and then at the end, what we would ask is for your authorization for us to negotiate a contract on several pieces. And then if we get that direction, we would bring those contracts back for your approval at a later point, although I would suggest we simply put that on the consent agenda because that will just be codifying what you've authorized us to do. So with that, Priscilla Williams from Engineering Services is here to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Branch and members of council. This presentation will review the designer selection process and restate staff's request to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations with the design team of Ratio Henning Larson. Construction management will also summarize the selection process for the CEMAR, the Construction Manager at Risk. Seek your approval to authorize the city manager to enter into negotiations with staff's recommended firm, and highlight future touchpoints. This slide illustrates a brief timeline of the designer selection process that has developed over the past months, and after staff's presentation to council in March, the decision was deferred. Staff recommended at that time and recommends today, the Ratio Henning Larson team, which is a local firm with a national presence, teaming up with an international firm to practice research-based, comprehensive, and integrated design. The team will focus on community, identity, human interaction, sustainability, and engagement. This team was selected because of its experience, its qualifications, its competence and expertise with civic space design, its approach to constructability, and on-time delivery within budget. The Ratio Raleigh Studio will manage the project, with Henning Larson serving as the design architect, utilizing its staff from its New York and Copenhagen studios. Staff has confirmed with Ratio that the team, in its response to the RFQ, has not changed. Staff recommends council authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with the design team Ratio with Henning Larson for designer consulting services for the Civic Campus Phase One project. And now on to our CEMAR recommendation. The CEMAR solicitation was issued on February 12th, after receiving authorization from council on January 22nd. Two mandatory pre-submitting conferences were held, and the responses were due on March 20. Four responses were received, and all four firms were invited to interview. Those interviews were conducted on April 9, and today, we offer our recommendation. As we mentioned in previous presentations, the greatest benefit to utilize CEMAR delivery is the collaboration between the CEMAR and the designer. It mitigates risks associated with constructability and bidability challenges, and it also approaches budget responsibility from a joint stance. The city engaged in a qualifications-based project, process that complied with the statute. A CEMAR selection team was comprised of multidisciplinary staff with multi-departmental representation: engineering services, public utilities, transportation departments, and also the MWBE program staff from housing and neighborhoods. Responses to the RFQ have been posted on SharePoint. Staff's process was thorough. The RFQ required respondents to provide evidence of experience, competence, and qualification in four areas: construction of urban towers, the development of the guaranteed maximum price, MWBE goal achievement, and project understanding. The interview addressed an additional 15 topics and required the presence of the proposed project manager and the pre-construction and construction teams. Topics ranged from budget and schedule control to quality assurance, embalming iconic design with budget and constructability, to experience with towers in tight spaces and constrained sites. And it ended with, "Why should the city choose your firm?" Staff recommends Brassfield and Gori in association with the Holt Brothers Construction Company. This team was selected because of its experience with CEMAR delivery, the city of Raleigh projects and permitting process, urban tower construction, and successfully achieving MWBE and hub participation goals. To summarize, for CEMAR services, staff recommends council authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Brassfield and Gori in association with Holt Brothers for the Civic Campus Phase One project. And for designer and consulting services, staff recommends council authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract with Ratio with Henning Larson for Civic Campus Phase One. As mentioned by the manager, the city manager, there will be additional touchpoints with council to seek your approval of other project-related contracts. Unless otherwise directed, these items will come back to you on your consent agenda, and they would be for the designer and CEMAR master agreement and pre-construction services contracts, and there may be other owners' representative services as well. This concludes our presentation, and staff is available for questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from council members?
No, I'd just like to say that, thank the council for allowing us to have additional time to do our research and to meet with Priscilla and her team. Councilor Stevenson and I, being a building contractor, and Russ is an architect, of course, we have a keen interest, it's kind of in our wheelhouse. We were fortunate enough to have very, a good number of very qualified design firms have showed interest in this project, and also the four construction management companies were very fine companies here from Raleigh area. So just for clarification, Ratio will be the lead architect on that design team.
Yes, sir. The contract will be with Ratio. Henning Larson is a sub-consultant to Ratio.
Excellent. Okay. And also that we were keenly interested in the fact that we've seen their design work overseas, and the fact that it would stress to them, "We're not Stockholm, we're not Amsterdam, we are Raleigh."
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'd like to move for approval.
Second.
Since we moved in properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move on to our Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, Willow Run South.
Good afternoon. I'm going to talk with you this afternoon about the Built Environmental Characteristics Study for the Willow Run South neighborhood. You can see the neighborhood shown here on the map. Newton Road is the northern boundary of the neighborhood. It's across Newton Road from Ravenscroft School and what, just west of Falls of Neuse. So your Neighborhood Conservation District, Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, as a reminder, is a zoning tool used to identify and conserve neighborhood characteristics. It's generally more restrictive than your base zoning district and applies additional development standards for any, for a particular neighborhood. To create one, we've already completed two of the four required steps. You had a citizens' petition brought forward to you by Willow Run residents on March 5. We completed the Built Environmental Characteristics Study. I'm reporting on that to you today. We reported back to the neighborhood on April 25. If you choose to move forward in the process, your next step would be to authorize a text change that would incorporate a definition for this particular neighborhood into the UDO as new regulation, and then to apply that would require that final step, step four, the rezoning process. So Willow Run is 33 acres, 38 parcels, entirely developed, one- and two-story traditional and split-level ranch houses built between 1975 and 88. Predominant characteristic represents more than 75% of the parcels. That would be Predominant characteristic represents more than 75% of the parcels, that would be 29 of the 38 parcels. We looked at lot size specifically at the request of the neighborhood, and a handful of other measurable characteristics that are easy to accomplish via desktop analysis that we often complete as part of the neighborhood studies. And so, a quick summary here, remember that number of interest to the neighborhood is the predominant lot size value, which is, sets at .76 acres, which is larger than the requirement of the zoning that's in place currently. Just as a reminder, we often offer this as context comparison to other zoning districts. So, they're currently R4. The other two districts that might be of relevant comparison are 2 and R1. Not a good, not a perfect match by any means to that predominant value. The predominant value comes in higher than the R2 standard, lower than the R1 standard. So, the neighborhood meeting on the 25th, we had good turnout from the neighborhood, 19 attendees out of, what is that, the 38 lots? They had questions about how the process works, how the text change process works, how you all make your decisions. The big takeaway from that meeting is that they support the NCOD option, and I think there are a number of them here today in support of this request. Again, if you want to move forward, the way for you to choose to do that would be to authorize a text change amendment, to add that definition for the neighborhood to the UDO. You can authorize staff to bring that text change, or you can authorize the neighborhood to bring that forward. That's really up to you. And then, again, that rezoning process would be required to apply the district somewhere in the city. What questions can I answer for you?
Counselors, any questions?
Yes. Can you remind us how many NCODs there are already in Raleigh?
I believe there are 21 at this point.
And are the majority of them to limit density and create permanently larger lot sizes as they are in existence today?
I would have to go back and look at all of them. I can't, I can't off the top of my head to speak to that specifically.
Fair enough. And curiously, how does our larger number of NCODs compare to other surrounding municipalities?
Others, oh, other surrounding municipalities. So, the Neighborhood Conservation District in Durham is a little bit different. It is a little bit more design-based. It's not as necessarily as quantitative. That's the one I'm most familiar with.
Okay.
And then, mostly, other jurisdictions call us and ask us about how NCODs work because they want to know.
And can you remind me what it would take, say, 10, 20 years down the road, if someone wanted to get out from underneath an NCOD, what would it take?
They'd have to rezone their property.
The single rezoning of their property. And is there any way to repeal an NCOD?
I suppose that you'd have, you would, you would probably see a collective petition in the same way that you see a collective petition to get one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Branch. So, this is in my district, and, you know, I've heard a lot of positive comments about the process. Thank you very much for that. And with 90% of the folks out there in agreement with this, I'd like to go ahead and move for approval and have this be a staff-initiated text change.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second, to approve staff-initiated text change. All in favor, say aye.
Can I make one comment? I'm going to vote against this.
We have unreadiness.
What's that?
Okay, you have unreadiness. Go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, I, as an at-large council member, I think it's really important to remember who's not at this table during our debates. And in this case, it's individuals who don't yet live in this neighborhood, but who might one day. Folks who live in this great community already will, for any number of reasons, move out and either sell or pass on their homes. And the folks who purchase or inherit these homes may have different priorities and needs in the future, whether that's tomorrow or in 20 years, than those who are living here now. And for me, it doesn't feel fair to deny future homeowners and renters opportunities for the sake of making sure that your neighbor's property isn't subdivided, so I'm going to be voting against moving forward with an NCOD.
Okay. Any more unreadiness? All right.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying. There is a big debate about adding general density in our community. You and I have had a lot of conversations about that, and I think we just heard there are tools for people to change their minds through the, either individual or collective rezoning process, if they change their minds. I think that one of the aspects of NCODs that people miss is that the people who are opting into this thing, they're making a conscious decision that the quality of life that they invested in, in this neighborhood, is something that they're willing to forego some of the value that they could get from selling and subdividing the lot. And so, in a way, they're actually preserving the affordability of these homes by depressing the values by saying, "We're not going to look towards the economic value of selling and subdividing and redeveloping in this neighborhood." Now, personally, what I'd like to see in the future, and this is, I'm sorry, it's a little off-topic, is that we will get around to having citywide ADUs someday, and that it seems like a lot of these NCODs, if that was an option, I, I bet you, they would say, "You know, having an ADU here is a good way to add more value to my property without subdividing and scraping off these dwellings and building something new in a way that is general density." And so, I really see that as the, a more constructive path forward for dealing with NCODs in the future. That's it.
And just based on something that you stated, to provide clarity, I know it will cost someone more, but if someone were to buy a property that's an NCOD, they can rezone, they come out of that C, NCOD, and then, if they so choose, could then subdivide the lot?
In theory, yes.
Okay, okay. Okay? Any other unreadiness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right?
No.
All right. Motion passes, sits, one. All right. Next, we have text change, TC 119, home stays.
I apologize, I had a slide in here. This is a TC-1-19 for home stay, the home stay text change. The council conducted a public hearing for this item on May the 7th. At the conclusion of that public hearing, the council requested additional information from staff regarding the implementation of this ordinance. In the memo that was included in your packet, we identify four process enhancements that would be necessary to prepare for the acceptance of the home stay applications. Those would be the creation of the application itself, any supporting materials. Development service would need to create a special use application for the home stay permits. This application would include information as specific to the home stay ordinance, the requirements for that, and it would likely include all of the, the required backup information in support of that application. Next would be staff training. This would come in three areas. The intake staff would need to be trained on how to accept these applications, and making sure that they meet all the requirements and everything is included. It would require, acquire training of the review staff, who will actually be reviewing the applications. And third, it would require training for the inspectors, who would be going out inspecting these properties, to make sure they're in compliance with what they've had, what they've submitted and what's in the adopted ordinance. The third, the third enhancement would be public outreach. With the creation of these new regulations, staff believes it would be appropriate to perform an outreach of the new, identifying new regulations. And this would include creation of a website and graphic materials to disperse to the public. Fourth would be the permitting submittal process. This would have two components. The recreate, the creation of the business rules for the application's submittal, and the integration of the city's new permitting system, Intergov. Those would be the two points for that. At the May 11th meeting, it was also asked of staff if the home stay applications could be submitted prior to the effective date, which now stands at 90 days after the approval of the ordinance. The staff does not see a, as this is being a very effective measure as far as time, time savings for an applicant, given that we do have to create the application itself and train members of the staff for the acceptance, implementation of the, of those materials. So, with that, staff is available for any questions.
Questions? I have actually one. Just looking at the policy for home stays, this is still just two rooms within a residential property, and this is specifically to residential zoning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
R2 through R10.
Yeah, R2 through R10. So, RS, anything that's mixed-use by right now can do whole house?
We, there is, at this time, there is no allowance for whole home.
Okay, okay.
In residential or in mixed-use?
This particular ordinance doesn't cover it. I think that we talked about in the past that a whole house, as we've called it, or whole dwelling unit, is characterized the same as overnight lodging. So, anywhere in the code where overnight lodging is permitted, it could be potentially permitted, assuming that other requirements for that zoning district were met as well.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or motions?
Yeah, I handed out the proposed ordinance with some proposed changes.
Speak to your mic, please.
Oh, sorry. And, so, I would like to remind everybody that this has been, I probably don't need to remind you, this has been a very, very lengthy process, and the needle here has really moved with the, we, this is, proposed ordinance is a very big compromise compared to where we were three years ago. And it's time that we get this passed and go about getting it, making this a legal operation now. So, the first ones, and some of it's just housekeeping here. Under the paragraph one, defined, last sentence, the first paragraph, rental of, I'd like just to insert the word entire dwelling unit. Under item two, use standards, paragraph C, to change the fourth word from if to of at the time of submission, instead of the time if submission. Paragraph E, on that one, I'd like to strike the first sentence and replace it with a residential district, instead of listing them individually, for clarity. And I'd like to also change where it says shall not exceed four adults, I'd like to change that to two adults. And the last one would be under I, where it says the premise shall not be used for live-in work, and also, and insert accessory dwelling unit, and then, or a daycare home. And, oh, I'm sorry, and one more. Under four revocation of permit, under C, the last paragraph, the first sentences, first sentence, where it says, "With notice of violation of the city code, opportunity to respond," instead of for responding. Thank you, Ms. Mendel, for your help on this, and others for putting this together. So, I'd like to put that in a form of a motion for approval.
Second. Can you read the comprehend, there should be a consistency statement with it?
All right. So, I'd like to make the motion based on the handout I just gave, and we're going to establish regulations concerning home stays, a type of overnight lodging, and to allow home stays in certain zoning districts that permit residential uses.
And to adopt the consistency statement dated May 7, 2019, in the, no, I'm just saying, we have to adopt the consistency statement at the same time.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm sorry, I didn't have that up. So, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 7, 2019, containing the agenda materials and to approve the ordinance.
As amended, per your handout.
Yes.
Thank you. Second.
All right. I just have one unreadiness. I see where you said, under 2E, the change in number, maximum number of overnight guests shall be, should not exceed two adults, correct?
Yep.
But on the, on the very first page, under defined, it reads, "A facility that contains individual rooms that are rented to the general public to be, to be more than four unrelated persons for seating periods."
I think that's boarding house.
So, is this for just boarding?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's just a boarding house?
Boarding.
Okay, I see, this is on the home stay part, okay. Which makes me go back to my point where we can have four unrelated in a boarding house, but not in a home stay?
Right, but I think as far as having a boarding house, there's restrictions on where you can have those. We're opening this up to all residential zoning.
Well, a boarding house by its definition is over 30 days of occupancy versus less than 30 days.
Okay. Yes, I'm still on unreadiness. It was moved in second, but I still have unreadiness. Okay. I've, I've gone back and forth. We got a motion, and it's been second.
I've got a friendly amendment.
You have a friendly amendment?
Seeing that Healthy Neighborhoods is currently looking at whole house rentals, that's in there right now, I'd like to add, as a friendly amendment, that this, passing, passing this ordinance would have no impact on whole house rentals until we explicitly deal with this type of short-term rental.
Are you asking permission for that?
I am, I'm offering a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I understand that. I'm not in favor of whole house rentals in residential districts, period.
So, what, what my friendly amendment would do is to say, those are going to continue the way we've been operating them right now, and not be enforced until we explicitly deal with them, and they're in committee right now.
I'm sorry, I can't agree with that. There's been so much trouble with whole house rentals, even in my district. Lots of complaints, lots of bad actors out there.
And what we're hearing is staff have found around 50 complaints over the, since 2014. So, I think we're, there's actually a lot more good with whole house rentals than there are complaints, and so, I'd have to disagree. And if, if the friendly amendment will not be accepted, then I will be voting against this.
Okay.
Just a comment I'll make, and that is, hopefully, we can have those further discussions about where the cases for whole house rentals in residential districts does provide the kind of neighborhood quality of life protections, protections against absentee landlords buying affordable units and converting them, and all those other items. But I think there is some middle ground there that we'll be able to discuss in committee.
All right. It's been moved in second. I, I still have some concerns around the enforcement. Of course, this will be complaint-driven, which still goes back to the timing pressures on staff, but it's been, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right? No. So, 5-2.
Okay. And I have something I'd like to read about enforcement. Now that the decision has been made to regulate short-term rentals in residential districts by the home stay ordinance, we need to address the issue of enforcement of illegal short-term rentals in the city. The council had previously decided to temporarily stay enforcement pending a decision on how to regulate short-term rentals. Because we have adopted a home stay ordinance, enforcement of the UDO provisions relating to short-term rentals needs to resume, and staff should be instructed to proceed accordingly. The date I would propose to restart enforcement is January 1, 2020. The reason I would support a start date of January 1, 2020 is because, even though the city believes it's important to resume enforcement, I realize that certain things must be done to get the home stay program underway, and that some individuals have relied on the enforcement stay. I would also like to make sure there's enough notice to everyone in the city zoning jurisdiction that the city will resume enforcement, and they need to act to come into compliance as soon as possible. The staff can summarize how enforcement will work, but I believe seven months should be enough time for everyone currently operating in violation of the UDO to correct those violations, whether that be by obtaining a home stay permit under the new provisions or otherwise. I therefore move to resume enforcement of all UDO provisions related to short- I therefore move to resume enforcement of all UDO provisions related to short-term rentals effective January first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Any unreadiness?
So just to make sure, obviously, there's going to be some period that staff needs to, is that already built into the ordinance? The period of time before, between effective date and voting date?
Ninety days.
Was that, was that ninety days that I missed?
Ms. Mendel's motion is really allowing till the beginning of the year to start enforcement, so by implication, it'll go into effect after ninety days, but nobody would get in any trouble for not following it.
Violation, okay, thank you.
So that would give that additional time for everybody to get everything in place and get into compliance, however, that would be by getting a home stay permit, or stopping renting, or whatever it was. That, under her motion, that's what would happen.
Got you, okay, thank you.
I have a question for Councilman Stevenson. Do you believe we'll have out of committee your short-term rental item that'll come before council way before January?
Yes.
So wouldn't that also address this matter?
No, it, the, the way I see the whole house conversation going, it would be for limited time, and that's, I think that's the conversation we've been having about whole house in residential districts, is we don't want to have year-round, short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods that would, again, that would incentivize absentee landlords to just convert affordable units into.
But, but it's setting a policy that will have restrictions on it, that staff will be enforcing?
Well, we'll, we'll incorporate what happens here today into our conversation about limited-time whole house rentals in residential districts.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and properly second. All in favor? All, all, it's been approved and properly second, and effective date of January first of two thousand twenty. All in favor, right, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right to say no. Five, two.
I have one more. I have one more. I'm not sure that anyone has noticed the text amendment to increase the fines. The home stay ordinance imposes a five hundred dollar fine for violation of the home stay regulation. However, the current fine for violations related to whole house, short-term rentals, is still a hundred dollars. I think council should consider whether imposing the five hundred dollar fine for both home stay and what is now known as house, whole house, short, whole house, short-term rental should be the same. I move to authorize a text amendment to the UDO to increase, excuse me, civil penalties for violations related to overnight lodging, use in residential districts, districts to five hundred dollars per day.
Second.
Question?
Sure.
Is the, I'm sorry, I'm, it's all new to me.
I got it.
So.
Me too.
Yeah, is this violate, is the, the fee, help me, the fee for violation, is that for what we just passed in terms of whole house starting January first, or is that part of home share?
It's part of home, it's part of home stay. And so instead of having two fines related to home stay, as we pass today, on whole house, which we're not currently enforcing, we have two sets of fines. I'm just asking, could we change them to the same?
Okay.
To five hundred.
Okay, so we're just making the fines the same?
Yes.
And what we passed in home stays was, where was that? I'm trying to find it here. Was this one five hundred already, or was the one in the UDO five hundred?
Ms. Attorney?
Pardon me, F.
Which one was five hundred, or is five hundred currently, and we're bringing the other one up too?
Okay, under the home stay ordinance that you just adopted, the penalty is five hundred dollars a day. And Ms. Crowder's motion is to make that penalty consistent with all short-term rentals, as opposed to just home stays. So that any time that there was, the way that the motion would read is that if there is a violation, short-term rental violation, lodging, overnight lodging in a residential district, regardless of whether it's just renting a room or a home, it would be the same penalty.
Okay.
So if this goes through without the change, then if you're doing a whole house, you have a hundred dollar fine, and if you're doing a home stay, you have a five hundred dollar fine, so there was, I think, a need to make those consistent one way or the other, regardless of what the penalty is.
Thank you for the clarity.
It's about consistency.
Okay. Though I've disagreed with the last motions, I do believe consistency in policy is fair, so this is one I will actually support, but we've been moving to properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same right?
No.
All right, six, one.
Thank you.
Anything else dealing with housing?
No, sir, not for me.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Condemnation requests, sidewalk road improvement?
I think you skipped one.
No, I didn't.
No.
Home stay, in number five, is condemnation. Sir, Sir Court Drive Sidewalk, yeah.
So this item is coming back on your agenda, you, you had a citizen petition related, or a, a submittal from a citizen expressing concern about the condemnation. Council asked to hold this for two weeks. Staff is available to answer any questions. This is Currituck Drive Sidewalk Road Improvement condemnation item.
Any, this was held, I think, Councilman Mendel, you asked us to hold this one?
Yeah, because it was in Councilmember Thompson's district, and I had gotten some emails about it, so I just, and he wasn't here last time, so I just wanted to make sure he had an opportunity to review the, the concerns from the email.
Right, yeah, and thank you for doing that, I appreciate that. So yes, I have met with staff about this, I'm in favor of moving ahead with this. The only tweak I would like to do would be to add a couple of solar-powered speed meter readers of poles out there, we've talked to staff about that, so that seems to be the only change I'd like to make, so I'll move for approval.
Second.
All right, so moving to properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same right, machine carries. All right, the funding, city manager, I propose operations budget and capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. For the first item on the city manager's report today, it's my pleasure to present the recommended operating budget and capital improvement program for fiscal year beginning on July first of two thousand nineteen. So what I want to do is just make a few comments, and then I'll turn it over to Mary Vigu with Budget Management Services to give you more information. This is the sixth recommended budget I presented to the council as the city manager. For next year, I am recommending no property tax rate increase, and I'd like to take a moment to explain why. As you know, Raleigh has undergone quite a bit of change during the last five-year period during my tenure as city manager, and if you look at it from the standpoint of ten or maybe even fifteen years, a tremendous amount of change. There's many examples and data points of that, I'll just give you two for the purposes of illustration. Over the last ten years, our population is up about nineteen percent, which is a little over seventy-five thousand people. So if you take that data point and you compare it to most cities and counties in North Carolina, our growth rate is higher than most entire cities and counties in North Carolina. Our tax value is up over twenty-four percent, so quite a bit of construction and investment. However, it is difficult for us to keep up with the increasing demands for service and infrastructure, and that is certainly evidenced by the number of initiatives that we're currently working on as a part of our strategic plan, and, and the council has identified several of those items. That's why I'm really so proud of our staff and our employees for working so hard to try to serve our citizens. As we continue to have growth in service, as we continue to have demands on our infrastructure, our folks are working really, really hard to try to keep up with those expectations and retain that, retain that community feel that Raleigh is really proud of. As I've mentioned to you before, cities are really about providing service, and when you provide a service, it really means people. People are providing service. We often get caught up into what things cost and, and the specific investments that are being made, but at the, at the bare bones of it, we are really an organization of people providing service to our citizens. And so those employees have to work really hard to keep up with those expectations, not only with the specific work request that comes in front of them, but also doing it in a, in a friendly and a strong customer service manner. So that's one of the things as an organization we continue to try to promote. I believe our citizens have, have noticed that, that they do pay attention to the efforts of our employees and our organization and our leadership. One illustration of that success is the community survey that you're familiar with, that was conducted last November, and again, I just wanted to point out a couple of illustrations of that. In the citywide survey, citizens that responded that ranked something as excellent or good, overall quality of life, ninety percent. The national average for this statistically valid survey, survey is about seventy-one percent. So again, that's, that's a pretty good sign. A quality of our services provided by the city at seventy-five percent, national average is around forty-four. And finally, just another illustration, overall value for city tax dollars and fees at fifty-six percent, and the national average is thirty-two percent. So again, I think the challenges that are brought forward in terms of growth, we're all working really hard to manage that. I, I am proud of the work of our employees to try to keep up with that in that environment. Now despite some of that growth, our government revenues have not kept pace with some of those expectations. And as one illustration, even though it's pretty close, for three fiscal years in a row, if you include the current one, we're not going to make the expectations of our general fund revenue. General fund is defined by our general property tax, sales tax, general government revenues. There's several reasons for that, which Ms. Vigu will talk about in just a moment, but notably, how our sales tax is collected and distributed, some of the changes we made to our user fees, and perhaps in a couple of cases, a little overly optimistic on what kind of revenues we thought we were going to generate with the growth we were seeing. So with that in mind, this particular budget focuses on several really core areas. First, we were really focusing on strengthening our foundation, not only as an organization, but as a community in terms of budget delivery, rather than the pursuit of new and expanded services. In other words, there's a lot of things that we're currently working on, lots of initiatives, lots of infrastructure, we didn't add very many in this one, we're continuing to implement what we have in front of us. Second, we are focused on getting our house in order. We are refining our revenue estimates, we're generally holding the line on our operating budget, and we're limiting, again, new program initiatives. And finally, what we are prioritizing is investing in our current people, equipment, training, and our facilities to make sure we are prepared to serve. In other words, this is more about what, what growth revenue we do have is put forward to our existing employees and facilities and training services. So as I previously mentioned, this budget has no property tax rate increase, and we look forward to working with the mayor, mayor council, mayor protem and council going forward. I would like to take a moment to just do a few thank yous in terms of this budget. All of the staff throughout the various departments work hard all year long to manage their budgets. They have to manage procurement, they have to manage personnel, they have to manage contracts and things like that, and so we really ask them to help us come together to balance this budget without a tax increase, not just the folks that work in it every day, but also out in the apartments, and they've done a really great job of helping bring that goal to fruition. Special thanks to Budget Management Services, Finance, Human Resources, and Communications, who put together more of the specifics of the materials in front of you, although a lot of people do certainly help with that. Finally, I would like to take a moment to say thank you to you, the mayor, mayor protem, members of the council, for your work on this particular budget as we get to this particular point. You spent some time at your retreats talking about the strategic plan and your, and your critical goals, and then you spent some time with three separate, again, budget work sessions to get feedback on some preliminary proposals. That dialogue helps get us to this point at the recommendation where hopefully there's not too many surprises, and it's something that meets your expectations. But that did require some additional time from you, and so on behalf of the staff, I just wanted to say thank you for giving us that, that, that time. So now for, to get to the real details of this budget presentation, I'm going to turn it over to Mary Vigu, she's our Budget Management Services Director to make the presentation.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, wanted to begin with this slide, probably should have put it up while the city manager was talking, just as a reminder, that this budget really is a focus on our foundation, that we spent time prioritizing our commitments to our employees in the community above demands for new or expanded services. So I want to talk a little bit about the process on how we got here. We began developing initial estimates in the fall, and kicked off the process within the organization in December. In February, as you recall, we shared at a work session with council, preliminary projections, and a financial update. At that time, we projected an eight to ten million dollar budget gap within the general fund. Council held public work, budget work sessions from February through April, as staff presented updates and proposed changes related to personnel, fees, enterprise charges, and the capital improvement program. During the same time, staff worked on revising revenues and cost estimates, along with meeting with departments to review budgets. The general fund was balanced, utilizing several strategies. Revenues were updated, and while there were not major increases, we did see minor increases in several areas. Healthcare cost assumptions were revised, and we saw improvements in that area as well. Working with departments, we were able to reduce the general fund transfer to capital in all areas, and specifically in the area of technology. This budget also reflects minimum additions for departments. We focused on strengthening current programs and services, along with investing in our employee base. As council recalls, over the last several years, we have not met our budgeted revenues, and we do not anticipate hitting them this year. This chart depicts our budgeted revenues and actuals for the last four years. As indicated, revenues have fallen short. One area focused during budget development was right sizing our revenues. The proposed budget reflects a one point nine percent overall growth in revenues for the general fund. Staff estimates modest growth in our major revenue sources of property tax and sales tax. Property tax is estimated to grow two point one percent, which is slightly higher than the two thousand nineteen budget, that saw a one point nine percent growth. Sales tax is estimated to grow two point five percent, which is substantially lower than previous years. There are several reasons for this. The impacts of the twenty, the fiscal year two thousand seventeen sales tax redistribution have led to slower annual growth, and the city's sales tax growth has been lower than the state average since that change. We also have met our budgeted sales tax number over the last few years, and so this budget reflects a realignment with our actual experience. Utilities franchise is up seven point seven percent, which is actually an improvement over last year, when we lowered the utilities franchise projection. There are several other miscellaneous revenues, including things like some of our fees in parks and recreation, and some of our internal charges, that we reviewed and have right-sized for our fiscal year twenty budget, and these were specifically in areas that we have historically not been meeting our budgeted revenues. This chart shows our general fund major revenue trends over the past ten years, and as the chart demonstrates, that while we have seen growth, it is not as great as it has been in previous years. As previously presented during our budget work sessions, there are several proposed increases in the budget for our enterprise funds. The proposed budget includes an increase in the monthly sewer administrative charge of seventy-five cents, which will align the sewer-based rate charges to cost recovery, which is based on the cost of service study that Public Utilities completed this year. Solid Waste is proposing a dollar fifty cent increase per month, which will assist in stabilizing their current level of service. The proposed budget also includes various downtown parking rate increases that are part of a two-year phased approach to shift prices to market rates. The proposed changes are for on-street, off-street, and monthly parking. The budget proposes no stormwater fee increases, and maintains the current property tax rate of forty-three point eighty-two cents per hundred valuation. The proposed budget continues the pursuit of investing in our employees as the core foundation of our organization. The proposed budget includes funding to provide annual merit increases for our public safety open range and general step employees at three or five percent at an estimated cost of five point three million, ensuring we reward performance and stay competitive in the market. Broadband employees will be eligible for variable merit increases ranging from one to six percent based on performance, at an estimated cost of two point five million. In addition to funding the step advancement and broadband merit, the city's living wage rate is adjusted in accordance with council-adopted policy. The living wage applies to all full-time permanent employees, and for fiscal year twenty, the living wage is increasing. all full-time permanent employees, and for fiscal year 20, the living wage is increasing from thirty thousand three forty to thirty-two thousand ninety. The proposed budget also includes additional compensation adjustments, including implementing the new public safety open range pay structure, and the results of the one-third market review study. As previously presented to Council in a work session, and discussed in greater detail in a follow-up memo provided in April, staff is proposing several changes associated with public safety to address some ongoing concerns. The budget proposes creating a public safety open range system, which will be effective on July first, from the current step structure, maintaining the same annual merit increases and not decreasing any of the range maximums. Working with police and fire, Human Resources has developed new promotional guidelines to go with this change. The revised pay structure also transitioned starting pay for fire captains and police sergeant ranks over a three-year period to create separation between supervisors and subordinates. Starting pay will increase three percent annually, beginning in fiscal year 20. The budget also includes funding for pay adjustments to mitigate public safety leapfrogging. While it is impossible to eliminate all leapfrogging, in the proposal, the proposal is designed to mitigate some of the impacts. The proposal adjusts compensation so no employee promoted since September thirtieth, 2017, will be compensated higher than someone else within the same rank with greater than or equal total years of service. This proposal only addresses leapfrogging concerns caused by promotions since implementation. Proposed policy revisions associated with these changes, along with the original memo from HR, are included with Council's budget materials. Health insurance is one of the most expensive costs that the city incurs. This chart shows that over the past seven years, the city's contribution to healthcare has grown forty-six percent. Sorry, I don't mean to keep it there that long. There we go. Employee and retiree health claims are estimated to increase by six point nine percent for fiscal year 20. While some of the cost increase will be passed to employees through premium increases, in the proposed budget, the city is absorbing most of these costs. We propose increasing the monthly employee and retiree premiums for all plan types. And so depending on your plan type, increases will range from zero to thirty-two dollars per month. Premium increases will take effect on January first, 2020. We propose no changes to out-of-pocket maximums, and we maintain the no-premium employee-only plan that covers about thirty-four percent of our employees. All regular full-time employees are covered under the North Carolina Local Government Employees Retirement System, otherwise known as ELGERS. Employees contribute six percent of their annual salary on a tax-deferred basis. The ELGERS Board of Trustees recently voted to increase the employer's contribution by 1.2% annually through fiscal year 2022, to ensure that the pension system is sufficiently funded. For fiscal year 2020, contributions increased from 7.75% to 8.95% for regular full-time employees, and from 8.5% to 9.7% for our sworn law enforcement employees, and this totals about three million dollars. By fiscal year 2022, the city's contribution will increase to almost thirteen percent. The ELGERS Board has not recommended any changes to the employee contribution. With limited new resources available for the fiscal year, this budget focuses on strengthening our foundation and funding our prior commitments and programming, while continuing to respond to the demand on services. Over the past ten years, the city of Raleigh has added 1,078 acres of new parkland, 1.6 million square feet of new city facilities, and staff has completed nearly 1 million building inspections. To respond to this growth, and the proposed budget includes twenty-three new positions across all funds. In the general fund, four new positions are added, including a position in engineering services to support city-owned facility growth, and a maintenance technician is added in Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources in response to city's park growth, including Moore Square and Dix Park. Also in our general fund, a new position is included in city planning to add capacity and additional oversight for ensuring plan review accuracy, consistent interpretation of the development code, and the development of relevant training. An additional position is being added in Housing and Neighborhoods to support the Human Relations Commission and Community Relations. The proposed budget also includes six new positions that are funded through our 2014 Parks Bond and 2017 Transportation Bond, to continue to support those project implementations. To respond to a growing vibrant city and enhance customer service, a plan reviewer for current planning, and an assistant chief for multi-trade inspections are being added to Development Services and funded with development fees. Four positions are proposed in Public Utilities to assist with asset management and customer service. Based on our new director's organizational review, the budget also proposes seven new positions at the Convention and Performing Arts Complex. The proposed budget continues our investment in public safety, replacing outdated water and trench rescue equipment in the Fire Department, and continuing our fire apparatus replacement plan. Funding is also included to expedite police vehicle outfit and to facilitate the opening of the Police Department's new southeast district station. The proposed budget also continues funding for our city's strategic plan initiative teams. Just as a reminder, there are sixty-seven cross-departmental strategic plan initiative teams that work together to support the citywide objectives associated with our key focus areas. One-time funding is included to support our Safe Vibrant and Healthy Community Initiative 1.1, which is safety during public events. Funding is included to purchase portable barricades that can be deployed at events to protect our citizens and visitors. Also proposed is funding for our initiative Safe Vibrant Healthy Community 4.1, Active Aging, which promotes healthy and active aging in place. This funding is to provide a pilot creative arts program that provides opportunity for our active adults. Funding is also included to continue the Transportation and Transit Initiative 4.2, which is our Connect Raleigh speaker series. The fiscal year 2024 Capital Improvement Program continues the city's investment in our foundation and focuses on Council and the community's priorities. I do want to pause here and take a minute to explain a little about the CIP you have in front of you. Some of you may have noticed that it has grown four times the size of last year's. A cross-departmental CIP Steering Committee worked this year on benchmarking and improving our CIP document. And so what you will find in that book are project pages for projects, which is something new for us. So we have not added a bunch of new stuff to the CIP. We have enhanced what you will see and created a more transparent book for you. So that is why the book has grown to 400 pages. The 2018 Community Survey findings showed that when asked to indicate which three issues will be significant to Raleigh over the next five years, sixty-eight percent selected affordable housing, sixty-three percent selected pace of growth, and sixty percent selected transportation. The proposed investments in our city's foundations in the CIP reflect these priorities. This chart depicts fair market rent for a one-bedroom apartment over the past five years. As indicated, we have seen a 24% increase in rent during this time. The 2018 Community Survey found that 27% of respondents rated the availability of affordable housing as excellent or good. This is down from our 2016 survey, when residents rated it at thirty-two percent. Based on Council's priorities and the community needs, the city continues to prioritize affordable housing development. The CIP for fiscal year 20 includes 10.8 million for affordable housing, with 3.4 of that available for future projects. As previously presented by Housing and Neighborhoods, funding has been committed for the production of 645 affordable units. Funding comes from a variety of sources, including the dedicated penny, property sales, home grants, and staff is recommending this year the use of two-thirds bonds for several major projects, including affordable housing. As a reminder, local governments in North Carolina can borrow up to two-thirds of the bond debt paid off in the previous fiscal year. Authorized uses, which are based on general obligation bonds approved by voters in previous years, can include things like public safety facilities, affordable housing, parks and recreation facilities, and street improvements. Staff is recommending utilizing this funding mechanism to provide 4.7 million for affordable housing development. The fiscal year 20 CIP continues our investment from the 2017 Transportation Bond in major street improvements. We continue our strong investment in the transit system with 45.8 million in fiscal year 20 to support bus rapid transit, the Go Raleigh Access Para-Transit Operation and Maintenance Facility, and improvements in our transportation amenities. Also included are fifteen new expansion and replacement buses. As the parking system continues its modernization efforts, the city is investing in structure restoration and improvements, and in future parking supply creation. In the past ten years, the city has increased greenway miles by eighty-nine percent, or fifty-five miles, which is roughly the distance from Raleigh to Rocky Mountain. The city continues our investment in our parks and recreation systems. Included in the CIP is the last year of scheduled funding for our 2014 Parks Bond projects. In addition to the bond, the general fund is investing four million to sustain and maintain a maturing system. Major projects include Brentwood Park improvements, Chavis Park, and Laurel Hills Community Center renovations. The CIP continues to reinvest in the system, including funding for greenway improvements and repairs, completing renovations at the Walnut Creek Softball Complex, and improvements at Optimist Park Community Center. Staff is also recommending an additional 2.5 million dollars from two-thirds bonds to be used for additional greenway repairs, including the Crabtree Creek Greenway. Over the past ten years, the Convention and Performing Arts Center has seen over four million visitors, has had a 469 million dollar direct economic impact, and has experienced a 29% increase in attendance. The CIP includes projects to continue to support the growing needs of the Convention and Performing Arts Center, with 4.5 million included for fiscal year 20. Projects include continued facility maintenance, Fletcher roof replacement, and various security enhancements. Fiscal year 20 CIP also invests in our public facilities, including 15.6 million in funding for the replacement of Fire Station One. The CIP also programs the remaining funds over the next three years for the Civic Campus Project to accommodate staff growth and consolidate facilities in downtown. The city has programmed funding for economic development projects, including the Building Upfit Grant Program, and we continue funding for the city's major technology infrastructure and business system improvements. Some examples of this that are occurring in fiscal year 20 are cyber security improvements, and a grants management solution that can assist staff with both internal and external grant management. The City Council will hold a work session each Monday in June, starting on June third at 4:00 PM. These weekly work sessions continue until City Council adopts an annual operating budget and a five-year CIP. And a public hearing will be held on the budget on Tuesday, June fourth, at 7:00 PM. We appreciate City Council's support throughout the budget process, and we do look forward to working with you on these important decisions. I'd also like, much like Ruffin, to extend thanks to my staff in Budget and Management Services, along with all of the departments that worked on developing the annual budget and the CIP.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you to you, your staff, all departments, and the city manager and department for working on this. You closed the eight to ten million dollar gap in three months, so I commend you for that, and thank you all for your work. As stated, we will have a public hearing on June fourth for the public to comment, and then we'll go from there. Any questions from councilors on this budget proposal?
No, I'd just like to hear Ruffin say one more time, no property tax increase, because not everybody can say that.
I think you said it well, Mr. Thompson. Yes, that is the recommendation.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
Definitely. Thank you. With that being said, thank you, and we will move to our new on-street parking meters.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, members of Council. The purpose of the presentation today from our parking staff is to give you an update on our investment in new on-street parking technology. We're getting prepared to roll this out to the public, so there's no action required to you today. It's been approved, but we thought we would talk to you about that before it actually went into the public environment. So Matthew Courier with Transportation is here to update you on the project.
Thank you, thank you, Ruffin, and thank you, Mayor Protem, Branch, and Council. Couple items we want to walk through, but first I want to walk you through a little bit of history. So, as you'll remember, back in February of seventeen, we received our downtown parking study recommendations. One of those recommendations was to take a look at our current parking meters and look at some new technology that those could contain. In August of eighteen, the Hillsborough Street Group did a parking study as well, and received a very similar recommendation. Back in February of this year, you'll remember, we held a parking meter open house and demo that a handful of you attended to touch and feel and see what this new infrastructure would look like. So here is our current meters out in the field. They were installed about ten years ago, in 2010. They have a small three-and-a-half inch black and white non-backlit LCD screen that has some concerns with glare, and in the evening, they're very hard to see. Our current program is pay-by-space, which means we have space numbers along the curb, and folks enter those when they have a parking session. These are English-only, so our multilingual folks or non-English first speakers have concerns using these. They have the previous generation of communication, which is the 3G communications, which leads to longer communication times and credit card processing, and these accept coins and credit cards. So the new generation is a Parkion Flowbird meter. These should look familiar. We have some at the Raleigh Union Station. They have seven-inch full-color backlit displays that are pretty easy to see in high light or low light situations. They have full keyboards for when we move to pay-by-plate instead of pay-by-space. They're multilingual and ADA compliant. They have enhanced 4G communications. They will continue to accept coins and credit cards. They have improved time limit enforcement, because we're able to let people know how long they can stay, and then enforce how long they're able to stay in each of the spaces that they choose. Has a large solar panel for recharging its battery. It has fully configurable screens, and instructions, and messages, so that we can let folks know kind of what's going on at the pay stations, or perhaps there's holiday, no, you know, free parking, or special length coming. We can let people know that. They provide receipts, which is a new thing if folks request them. They're compatible with validations, so we can start a program with businesses if we're interested. And there is a robust data suite on the backend to make sure we understand what's going on in our curb space. So few points on our kind of infrastructure and deployment schedule. So we're taking an asset-light approach to deploying our infrastructure. So we're remapping the location of meters along corridors. I think a great example of this is the Nash Square on the north side of it. We have three parking meters on that one block, and that's because the old meters could only handle so many parking spaces per meter. These handle an unlimited amount. So what we're looking for is to typically have one parking space per block, located centrally along that block. On some of our longer ones that have some different uses among them, we are going to separate and have multiple, just because it feels better. But the majority of, we'll have one parking space, one meter per block. We're going to increase our passport mobile pay signage along when we do this, to make sure that we're encouraging folks to use that. In the last two months, we've seen almost 20,000 transactions using that, and close to 20% of our transactions are using passports, so we're seeing some really great utilization of that. As you'll remember, we, in January, we had our first on-street ADA accessible spaces placed. We just had an update last week with the Mayor's Committee for Persons with Disabilities. And to let them know the success of those spaces, we're seeing great utilization. One of the things that we want to make sure is that when we go asset-light, that that's not going to hinder any of those folks who use those spaces. So we're going to place single-head meters that accept both coins and credit cards directly on those spaces. So folks who have ADA So folks who have ADA needs do not need to traverse down to the middle of the block. They'll have a meter right outside their block, I'm sorry, their parking space. We're going to do a west-to-east deployment schedule, so we're going to start on the Hillsborough Street Zone and then move east. Our implementation's going to run from late summer through the winter, and that's really to allow both citizens and staff time to get themselves used to the new equipment and not fully shock the system with new users all at once. And to be successful with that, we kind of have a three-pronged approach to how we're going to communicate with folks. We're going to have staff ambassadors along the corridors when we make these changes. Those will be on Hillsborough Street, folks from the Live It Up Hillsborough Street Group, as well as our agents as well, helping educate folks on the change and bring some attention and walk them through how to use the new meters. We're going to have enhanced on-screen visuals to walk folks through, how do you pay for this session, and remind them on some of the changes. And then finally, we're going to invest in some marketing materials, both on the ground and on the meters, to let folks know prior to the change that a change is coming, and then, once it has changed, some visual aids on the ground to remind them, you know, you're going to need to remember your license plate and some other changes. Next steps for us is that we're going to walk through the contracting and procurement process. We're then, midsummer, going to start marketing along Hillsborough Street. We'll then install in late summer on Hillsborough Street, and then, right after that, we'll start to move ourselves through the rest of downtown, finishing up in winter of 19 or early 20. So that is our plan. Happy to answer any questions or discuss.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from anyone?
No, I'm excited about it.
Yeah.
All right. Definitely. Thank you, and we look forward to the new meters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So last item on the city manager's report, an update from the Raleigh Police Department on police crime and traffic stop data. As you may recall, there have been several points through the development of the strategic plan that includes crime data, and several of the council members had asked for more regular updates, so that's part of the purpose of bringing that forward. We'd also received some questions regarding some traffic stop reports that had been out in the community, so the purpose today is to share some of that information with you. There's no action or any specific feedback. It's an opportunity for us to share information and answer any questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Police Chief Cassandra Deck Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good afternoon again, council. Thank you once again for the opportunity to come before you and literally just briefly speak to you about the 2018 crime data. I think that we have a really good story to tell in that regard, and it's important that we tell the story. We have received a number of inquiries from you, our council, our Human Relations Commission, our media outlets, as well as the greater community. And so I thought that it would be a good place to start with our crime report with you all first, and then we will release the information going forward. In a growing city with almost half a million people, I can say that much of the city's strategic plan is reflected in the work that the men and women of the Raleigh Police Department have done to ensure that we are a safe, vibrant, and healthy community. I wanted to start with the major crimes. And as you can see, this graph here, the chart here, really covers five years, from 2014 to 2018, and they reflect really a greater indication that crime is going down in our city. I think that's a result of several factors. However, these are the more significant offenses that occur throughout our city. So while we are going down in crime, these are significant and important. And I think the factors that lend itself to the reduction is reflected in a number of things. One is proactive policing, crime analysis, which gives us a better opportunity to look at patterns and trends and occurrences. The case clearance and investigation. Last year, at a major conference, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Police Department had received national recognition for our case clearance, and so I think that lends itself to some of the data that you see there. And engaging our community through both education and partnership speaks to overall, this is indeed a great place to live, work, play, and learn. However, if you take a closer look at that data that you have before you, you will note that there is one area that reflects an increase in major crime in our city last year, and that's aggravated assault, which is really the more severe assault charges that reflect often in greater injury and/or the use of a weapon. As we look at our crime, this slide further shows additional trending. The aggravated assault charges that I've just, the aggravated assault cases that I just mentioned contribute to a slight increase, a little less than 1 percent, in the overall rate of crimes against persons. So it impacts the greater category of crimes against persons. Conversely, though, our efforts in increasing, or addressing crimes against property to include motor vehicle theft, larceny from motor vehicle, and larcenies in general show that we have netted a 19 percent reduction in our overall crimes against property. The next couple of slides, to be quite open, is, there's no perfect place in this presentation specifically for these slides, but I would be remiss if I did not reference them. The aggravated assault data that I just mentioned, where you saw the increase, lends itself to primarily gun violence. This slide and the next three is actually an excerpt from the Firearms Violence Reduction Strategy that you all were presented with several months ago. So the majority of our cases, as you can see, are showing offenders between the ages of 18 and 24. Likewise, the majority of our cases are showing victims in that same category. I think it's also important to reference that this reflects the national data also. So your chief is not the only one that's dealing with this particular scenario. It's becoming more of a national concern. The demographics of our suspects are, as you can see, and similar in regards to the demographic of our victims. Our Firearms Violence Reduction Strategy also indicates, in its second pillar, the importance of community stakeholders and the level of intolerance and willingness to report violence as well. And we're seeing some of that. We will continue to solicit our community to help us impact this concern here in our city. And I do hope to come back to you in June to speak a little more on firearms violence in particular, because that is actually the Prevention and Awareness Month as well. Earlier from my comments, I referenced the overall police and community interaction and the volume of complaints. This slide breaks down that in such a way that it speaks to the reduction of calls for service. Self-initiated calls, as I had mentioned earlier, are all of those 911, are all of those calls that are not 911, coming directly from our community. As you can see, over the last several years, fewer people are calling 911 in a growing city. I think that's reflective of a number of things, but I also believe that it's also a reflection of the use of other means by which we engage our community, and that is through programming and through other initiatives as well. And I think you have to also mention the reality of the national climate that speaks to police and community relations. What we did here was we broke down the top three calls for service by district. And what you'll see, for the most part, is alarms and burglary, non-residential traffic. And a growing city keeps us busy. But if you look a little closer, you'll see a few areas that speak to disturbances and This slide also speaks to the mandate of having to allocate the necessary resources to maintain peace, enhance the quality of life, and preserve property. The resources that are allocated include additional personnel, community police initiatives, patrolling, programming, which includes things like our Youth and Family Services Unit, our Domestic Violence Intervention Unit, deploying those additional resources, our trauma counselor, just to name a few. But it also includes preventing, prevention initiatives that have also resulted in increased personnel in those areas that reflect enforcement, deterrence, education, community engagement, and prevention. And it's important to note that it cannot be one single activity that we deploy or allocate in terms of resources. It has to be a combination of all of the above that I've mentioned in order to create a balance of equitable service delivery. And sometimes, to be quite frank, it does appear that maybe we are deploying additional resources in some areas, but as you can see from these numbers, we have to respond. And when individuals call 911, we have to respond.
Chief, excuse me. I'm guessing that some of these mean northwest, northeast, southeast, southwest, and downtown. What is NOD?
North District.
Okay, thank you.
This slide will allow me to go into a greater conversation shortly, but as you can see here, in addition to the data that you've already seen, the number of arrests in our city have gone down as well. And I think that that is telling in regards to the level of community engagement efforts that we are performing and demonstrating on a daily basis. It's important, as we speak about transparency, that if we're going to talk about arrests, that we speak about use of force. Keeping in line with today's earlier discussion and following our arrest data, it is important that I speak briefly about the use of force. And I want to start with, although I touched on it just briefly during the presentation on citizens' review boards, I'd like to also offer the definition of force as defined in our policies, and it's also online. And basically, it refers to use of force is when all other means of resolving a situation have been exhausted or are clearly inapplicable. Force will be used only to the degree reasonably necessary to control the situation and include the use of restraining techniques, pepper gas, batons, hands, feet, tasers, and firearms. So it's not one aspect of force that speaks to the data that you have there. So during 2018, there were 379 uses of force by the Raleigh Police Department. Force was used in 2.995 percent of the 12,825 physical arrests that we made, and force was used in 0.102 percent of the 375,800 police-community interactions that I referenced a little early in the previous report. This affords us to segue into another conversation, which will lend itself to the next discussion here today. To close this portion of the conversation, which does segue, I wanted to speak briefly to the 2018 traffic stop data that you have before you. I know that periodically you all get various emails, as do I, with regards to information, and this today will give us an opportunity to elaborate a little more on the traffic stop data that is reflective of 2018 here with the Raleigh Police Department. And I actually wanted to give a little credit. In his book, and it's actually back there in my seat, I meant to bring it, because I had our command staff read the book, published by Dr., correction by Professor Frank Baumgartner, which references that since 2002, January 2002, data had been pouring in excess of 20 million records into the state's database as it relates to traffic stop data. He further mentions that the state has dutifully collected the state, the data, and provides a model of transparency by making the data available to the public, yet no thorough analysis of the nation's largest-running data collection project on traffic stops has ever been conducted. It's important to note that because we've recognized Professor Baumgartner's work, and we agree that there is a need for an analysis, because we do recognize that data alone is not intelligence without the analysis. So you have numbers, but you don't really know what to do with them or where to go with them. So actually, we thank Professor Baumgartner for bringing the data on traffic stops to You all had in your background information earlier, the 2016 RTI report as it related to traffic stop data, and that report was a result of, or if you will, somewhat of a byproduct of a greater analysis that was done with a number of departments throughout the state of North Carolina, and Raleigh being one of them. It was a very enlightening report, but it actually showed that there was no evidence of disproportionality with the Raleigh Police Department. In the previous presentation, I mentioned to you that we are a very open-minded and forward-moving department, and so, as chief of the department, I opted not to just rest on the data that we had received in the presentation or the study that had been conducted, that had been conducted by RTI. So in 2016, we reached out to RTI and asked them if they could delve down into our data to give us a greater understanding of actually what we had as it related to traffic stops. And so they agreed to do just that, and rather than take information from open sources, which is often what people are able to find online, we pretty much opened our department up and afforded them the opportunity to take a look inside and to figuratively state, let the chips fall where they may, and let us see where and if we can improve on our traffic stops. And so they came, and it is through staff members with RTI that we're able to segue into the next part of this discussion. And so they are here today to speak more specifically about how we came to bring them on board in terms of, look at the data, and so that we could determine what our next steps, if there were next steps, needed in going forward. So I am happy to introduce Travis Tanaguchi and Mark Pope of TSI, I'm sorry, RTI, and they are here today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. We are with RTI International. We're a nonprofit research organization located in Research Triangle Park, just down the road. Our mission is to improve the human condition by turning knowledge into practice. I direct our policing research program, and we conduct applied research on topics critical to law enforcement. Much of that research is in partnership with law enforcement agencies. And so as a result of ongoing collaborations we have with Raleigh Police Department, they came to us and asked us to conduct this analysis using a method that we had done previously for the Durham Police Department, who we also work with regularly. And so Dr. Tanaguchi, one of our senior research criminologists, is here today to present these results and talk about the method that we used.
Thank you for that. To be respectful of your time, we just have a few slides here that we will go over. Like was said, RTI explored this issue of racial disproportionality in traffic stops for the Durham Police Department. As part of that work, we started looking at other large cities in North Carolina, including Raleigh, Greensboro, and Fayetteville, to give us a comparison to the Durham work that we were doing. And as part of that, we provided those results for those cities to the individual cities that were also analyzed. Like the chief said, later on, RPD came to us and asked us to do a deeper dive into their data, into their traffic stop data. And this included additional information that is not available at the state level. So we originally started with the state-level data. By partnering with RPD on this, we were able to get additional information on officers and locations of the stops, and we used that information to better target our analysis. Importantly, RTI self-funded this analysis as part of our work supporting local communities. So there's been a lot said about our analysis and other analyses that have been done on traffic stop data locally. The key comparison that a lot of people make here is that the motorists stopped by the RPD do not match the demographics of the city if we expect people to be stopped equally. In this table I presented here, about 48% of the stops are with white motorists, white drivers, and 59% by census estimates are white residents in Raleigh. That number looks quite a bit different for black drivers. So black drivers stopped by Raleigh Police Department are 49% of motorists, while as by census demographics, they are 29%. And so the question we're trying to answer here is, does this difference indicate that there is racial bias by RPD officers? So there's a few problems with the census estimates and using it as the comparison, one of which is that the census estimates are not really a population at risk when it comes to driving. So the people that live in an area are not necessarily the only people that are driving in the area. They're not the main, not necessarily your main group of drivers. And so that's really the issue here. This issue does not get, when you're comparing census demographics, does not get at the actual driving population. If you want to do that, it turns out it's very expensive and time-consuming. There are surveys that can be done where you sit someone out on a street corner and count all the motorists and look at what their racial compositions are. It's tremendously expensive and not very generalizable is really the issue. So this approach that we've adopted is based off of a peer review, a number of peer-reviewed studies that have been conducted in numerous cities by many different researchers. It is based on, it's called the veil of darkness. The framework here is that basically it's difficult to determine driver race during times of darkness. And therefore, if you compare stops that are conducted during daylight hours versus stops that are conducted during nighttime hours, you'll have a better sense of whether or not there are disproportionate number of motorists of a certain ethnic or racial group that are stopped during different times. The challenge to this saying daylight versus darkness is that they, the driving population obviously changes. We wouldn't expect the motorist at 3:00 AM to be the same at 5:00 PM. And so instead of just saying daylight versus darkness, we use this concept of inter-twilight period. And I have a handy graph because this is a little confusing. Along the bottom X-axis, you have all the days of the year. Along the Y-axis, we have the time of civil twilight. So that's the time that it gets dark during the year, or during that day. And that's what happens when we plot all of those out. So this is actually fairly intuitive. On the below that, so that below that line that I've just placed up there, those are stops that always occur during daylight. Above this line are stops that always occur during darkness. And everything between those two lines are things that occur sometimes at night and sometimes at dark. The easiest way to think about this is if you get stopped at 7:00 PM in July, it'll be light out, so you'll be part of this inter-twilight period. If it's 7:00 PM in December, it's going to be dark out. And so here we've got some examples of ones that are always excluded because they don't occur during this inter-twilight period, and some examples of where these occur during the inter-twilight period. So for this example and for this methodology to work, we're only looking at the stops that occur between this time period, roughly 5:30 to a little after, a little, right around 9:00 PM at night. And so the question we're actually answering when we do this analysis is can we predict the race of the driver by whether or not the traffic stop occurred during daylight or darkness? Just some background here, here's the reasons for stop by overall and by that inter-twilight period, that 5:30 to 9:00 PM period. Mostly vehicle regulatory issues, speed issues, and very few relatively stops around seat belts and investigations. And what we see is there are generally a pretty good match between the two overall versus inter-twilight period, except for things like the speed limit violations. Right, so here's our results. The N is just the number of stops that we were looking at, and the odds ratio is really the number that we care about. An odds ratio of 1 means that we did not find any significant difference between stops that occur during the daylight hour versus stops that occur during darkness. So for overall, all the stops that we looked at during this time period, we did not find evidence of racial disproportionality. When we look at male-only drivers, and in this study, because of how we framed it, it would basically be black male versus white male drivers, there was no significant difference in the stops there either. Same for female drivers. So we went deeper because we had access to some information about officer assignments from the Raleigh data. With this, we looked at patrol versus non-patrol units. Overall, for the patrol units, we don't see evidence of disproportionality. We do see some evidence of disproportionality for the non-patrol units, basically indicating that black drivers and black male drivers specifically are overrepresented among traffic stops that were occurring during these time periods. According to best practices in the research, we did some sensitivity analysis. And when we do that in different model specifications, those results went away. Basically, the significance attached to those values went away. I can discuss more about that if you have questions, but this is a fairly standard approach to find the analysis and then to figure out where things are happening and when they're happening. And that's what we did here, and when we did that, the results did not maintain. So another big chart, we broke it down by the district of the stop. And basically, the only thing that we found here is that in the southwest district, black female motorists were overrepresented in the traffic stops occurring during daylight hour. All the other districts, the other gender subsets, did not have significance. We broke down the non-patrol units as well, and we did not find any significant difference there, suggesting that we did not, there was no significant overrepresentation of black motorists in these traffic stops conducted by these units. So just to summarize, no evidence of disproportionality at the city level, including when we look at female drivers and male drivers and by most districts. However, there was some evidence of disproportionality. Black female drivers were overrepresented in stops in the southwest district and those conducted by some patrol units overall. However, those results did not hold up under sensitivity testing. So there's been a lot said in the press recently about this limitation, I think. There are limitations like any method to study these things. We're only considering the race of the driver. This doesn't have anything to say about the other passengers or the number of passengers. And this methodology doesn't look at post-stop outcomes. So things like the quality of the interaction, which we know from other research to be critically important to how people perceive fairness issues, is not addressed here. And also, the post-stop decisions of citations, searching, or making an arrest, not part of this study. So that is all the material I have prepared here. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
First of all, thank you both for the information. I learned a lot in seeing it, and I definitely think it's a story that all should hear as we go forward. But I'll open it up for other council member comments.
It's a lot of data.
Yeah.
I have a really naive question. Patrol versus non-patrol, what's the difference?
So at the point you saw the patrol versus the non-patrol slide, that became an additional study. So we became, I pray not annoying to them, but I really wanted them to dig as deep as they could into our data. So when they came back and said that there were no differences, but then they saw the one about the non-patrol, then that's when you saw that additional slide that had gang unit and traffic unit. They are the specific units that are considered non-patrol. They're the ones that are not attached to field operations. But have the ability to make traffic stops.
Thank you.
Are there any plans to look into post-outcomes?
Yes.
We have not decided on a scope of work for what that would look like yet, but there are several methodologies that look at both the decision to cite and the decision to search post-stop to look at racial bias in those decisions as well.
Have you all ever done that for any other department?
We have not done that. Although those methodologies are well-known in the established research around policing outcomes.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Again, I just want to say thank you because I think it's very eye-opening. And also, it gives some context to the message that is going out. So no other questions. I'd say thank you for the information. And what are your, you have any other steps or plans?
I do have one other thing. I do want to just thank RTI for all of the efforts that they, and the resources that they brought to bear with us really doing a deep dive within our data. And as I've mentioned, in total, there were, in essence, three different efforts that were made. One, not of our own doing, but being a part of a greater research study. But then they looked into our own. The one thing that we want to do as well is begin to explore our traffic stop data on a more regular basis, starting in July, because we do want to stay on top of that. You know, I said it earlier, I'm really proud of the men and women of the Raleigh Police Department. And sometimes I think they do just, we just get a bad rap. Sometimes, things have been, and they've been tragic in the last several months. And that's not to be mitigated in any, in any shape, form, or fashion as I stand here and the men and women go forth and continue to serve. So we will continue to look at our traffic stop data on a regular and more regular basis as well. And what we hope to do is also go forward with this, this report here, because I do think that our audience is a bit limited today in terms of those who are present, but maybe, maybe linked in online. So we have identified four different dates, and we're going to put that out on the website today that speaks to us taking this very presentation outside of the chambers and being able to go forth and share this information to the greater community. One thing that was not referenced here is the methodology that RTI presented today is supported by NIJ, the National Institute of Justice. So this isn't just some research that nobody knows about, but this is, this is used worldwide. So I thought that it was important that there again, we tell this story. So we, starting June 13th, we will be going forward into the greater community, and we are actually going to the same locations to try best to make it as simple as possible as the places we did our face-to-face meetings back in 2015. So we will put that information out there, but the sites will be June 13th McKimmern Center, June 17th, North Raleigh Hilton, June 18th, the Hilton Garden Inn at Crabtree Valley, and June 20th, the Raleigh Convention Center. And RTI will be with us to make that presentation. So once again, I thank you. And I think that this also speaks to the message that I shared a little earlier, and that is, most departments, and RPD is no exception, we produce a lot of data. But data is not intelligence without analysis. So we then know where to go and how to get there. So thank you.
Thank you. One question, what time are those events?
I believe it's 6:30, but...
It'll be on the website.
Yeah, we'll put it on the website.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. At this time, we will have a report from our Raleigh Transit Authority. In the city, did you have anything else? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm finished. Do you want to go ahead and get started? I'll introduce you at least real quick. I've got Talalupe Omakay. She is with the Raleigh Transit Authority. She is the chair of our marketing committee. Our chairman could not be here today, so she is graciously filling in. And I appreciate her assistance as we talk about some transit activities. A couple of things, certainly everything that you're going to see today is part of the budget that you saw earlier. So it depends upon final adoption. These are all proposed projects as we move forward. So thank you. But with that, I'll let you get started.
All right, thank you. All right, we just have about three portions of our plan, operation, capital, and technology for our FY 2020 Go Raleigh work plan. The whole work plan goes back to our 10-year transit plan that we've presented here before. So in the operations portion, we have three new services. That's service in Garner, Roseville, and Knightdale. The services are starting August, September. The service in Garner is a redevelopment of an existing service that's going from peak to all-day. The service in Roseville is a new service that's a peak service. And the service in Knightdale is a redevelopment of an old service that is now an express service, and it's also going from peak to all-day service. There are three elements of our capital projects. It's the enhancement of transfer points at .5 million dollars. That includes the construction of a MLK Rock Quarry transfer, transfer point that we're going to construct. The Go Raleigh Access, Go Wake Access is a shared ADA maintenance facility. In that maintenance facility, that's $2.75 million that we're spending there. But again, that is a shared facility between us and Go Wake Access. There are shelters for new and existing bus stops, and that's a $2.5 million. Two million of that is in discretionary grants right now. So we do have .5 million dollars budgeted for our shelters. The East Raleigh Transit Center, that's going to be four to six buses in the bay. And the Midtown Transit Center, which is also another four to six buses. So those are our capital projects carrying on. And then there will be 15 replacement transit buses. So that's 10 to 12 CNG buses and three to five electric buses. So there's three buses without the grant approval and five buses with our grant approval. These are some of our BRT projects. Of course, that's a project development of $21 million. That's $4.3 million budgeted mid-year 2019. That includes all BRT corridors. In our technology piece, we're focused on building infrastructure and support with future network development enhancing rider experience. And we're going to have mobile ticketing. The mobile ticketing would also be useful and helpful because it will support fare capping, which means that it will automatically upgrade if somebody gets daily passes and then they get to the point where they've cost the bout for a week or a month, it'll automatically update them so they won't be charged any more money in our fare capping piece. But the technology will be similar to the Downtown Raleigh Parking App. But the technology will be similar to the Downtown Raleigh Parking App. All right, so we are requesting that council receive and adopt our FY 2020 Go Raleigh Work Plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Also, thank you for the information as far as the electric buses, you know, having a number and seeing that progress moving forward. Even I see it's pending a grant, but that's still a good step forward. Council, any questions, comments, a motion?
What's the delivery time for those electric buses?
The delivery time for the electric buses? About a day ago.
Generally, all buses right now, whether it's electric, CNG, diesel, are averaging between nine months and 18 months, really depending upon the manufacturer. A year is about a good, you know, usually a good, we use that as a benchmark anyway when we try to get out in front of purchases.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. No other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, either standing right, motion carries. Thank you. And I have a question for the City Clerk for the Raleigh Transit Authority. I remember seeing somewhere where as far as, I received a letter from the current Chair who couldn't make it, that his term is ending. And I believe the authority has selected a Chair, but I think we have to vote on that? Is that?
I believe that is correct in their bylaws or in the code that the, the council does approve or confirm the Chairperson.
That is correct. Council appoints the Chair. Last meeting, the Transit Authority did vote amongst themselves to recommend a Chair that has been brought forward.
Yeah, I just received a letter today, it's brought forward, that they recommended Ashley Talulipe as their new Chair for Raleigh Transit Authority. Just without objection, I move for approval. All right, it's been moved in properly second, all in favor say aye. Are those negative, same right, motion carries?
Adventful presentation, aye.
Thank you. All right. We will now have a report from our Historic Resource and Museum Advisory Board.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. Unfortunately, our Board Chair Fred Bellatin had to leave. As some of our volunteers know, his day job called. And so you get the B-Team today. My name is Troy Burton. I am the Manager of our Historic Resources and Museum Program. And as a historian, I am here today to speak to you ironically about the future. But to do so, I will employ one of our most revered and respected historical rhetorical devices, the timeline. So we will start with the back. Founded in 1792, North Carolina's capital city has grown from a small town to one of the premier education and innovation hubs in the country, home to a diverse and growing population and a vibrant and evolving cultural ecosystem. As part of this evolution, in June 2012, Raleigh City Council created the Historic Resources and Museum Program with the express purpose of protecting and programming cultural museum and historic resources managed by our city. The HRM program operates within the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department and currently oversees a system of historic resources and museums that includes the Borden Building at Fred Fletcher Park, the City of Raleigh Museum, John Chavis Memorial Park Historic Attractions, the Latta House and University Site, Moore Square, Mordecai Historic Park, the Pope House Museum, Pullen Park, our Raleigh Trolleys, and the Tucker House. During the most recently completed fiscal year, the HRM program hosted almost 1 million registered and ticketed visitors, a number that is substantially higher when considering passive visitors at our attractions, museums, and historic sites who may simply picnic at Mordecai, use the playground at Pullen or Chavis, or check out the free exhibit at the Core Museum. The HRM program's vitality is represented not only by our ever-increasing annual attendance figures, but also through our human resources, where we currently employ 12 full-time staff, over 250 part-time staff, and this last year, almost 1,500 volunteers who donated well over 11,000 hours of their time. The program portfolio includes some of Raleigh's most historic and iconic sites, including the John Chavis Memorial Park Carousel, the Pullen Park Carousel, the Mordecai House, and the Pope House. In 2014, the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources System Plan expressly named these historic resources as core elements that help constitute the singular cultural identity of our city. The System Plan sustained the mission and goals of the HRM program, which included the design and implementation of a strategic plan to balance public use, resource stewardship, expand the program's interpretive and demographic reach, and deliver compelling stories and programs to all Raleigh citizens and the public. The City of Raleigh's 2015 Strategic Plan leveraged recommendations in the 2009 Comprehensive Plan to develop strategies for the identification of and long-term visioning for the HRM program and other historic and important elements. The 2016 Raleigh Arts Plan detailed strategies for implementing a vision of Raleigh as a quote "community connected through both arts and culture" for which HRM's role as a cultural steward plays a critical part. Then in 2017, your body authorized staff to enjoin a consultant to work with the public, our Historic Resources and Museum Advisory Board, as well as other stakeholders, to craft the Historic Resources and Museum Strategic Plan. Plan development was based on an extensive community engagement strategy as well as evaluation of national best practices within the heritage community. Work matriculated through 2017 and 18 and consisted of benchmarking surveys, open houses, and public meetings, ultimately highlighted by Historic Raleigh Open House in April of 2018 in which we simultaneously ran events, programs, and exhibits at all nine sites and both trolleys. Activities on that day included a pop-up dog park at Tucker House, an heirloom plant sale at Mordecai, period music at Latta House and University Site, a Raleigh Camera Club exhibit at Borden Building in Fletcher Park, and a first-ever Raleigh Heritage Bike Tour, which consisted of a guided bicycle tour to all nine sites in our program. We offered two tours that day, which sounded like a grand idea at the time. However, with each tour checking in at a little over 16 miles, by the end of the second, I'm not sure we were as perky with the second group as we were with the first. But both tours sold out with well over 50 participants. And if you've never been on the Rocky Branch Trail or Little Rock Trail Greenway sections between Chavis and Pullen Park, I highly recommend it. A point of privilege to specifically mention that day was staff, volunteers, and program partners who participated. The fact that 12 staff with part-time help and volunteers simultaneously ran 11 different events without serious consequences continues to amaze. Of course, all this work became ingredients in the recipe that ultimately produced the HRM Strategic Plan, a plan that sets goals, identities, unique characters, and strengths of Raleigh's heritage ecosystem and aligns with existing city plans. A plan that provides a detailed assessment of existing conditions, a divine programmed position, as well as goals to move forward and strategies to achieve those goals. And with that, I was going to introduce our Board Chair, but I will fill in as a second and say that the goals are as follows, five. The steward of activated innovative places for community engagement that draws residents and visitors. And this really represents a cultural shift to our customers that are looking for experiences to include not only education, but also entertainment and recreation at our sites. We've also recommended food, beverage, as well as other recommendations within that goal. Goal number two, the curator of places that are sources of understanding and appreciation of Raleigh's heritage by diverse populations, to begin to track more specifically demographics to increase youth, minority, and non-English speakers at our sites, museums, and attractions. Goal three, an approachable organization with a broad interpretive reach for today's audience, including developing shared narratives incorporating Dix, Moore Square, and other sites that are now coming under the city's cultural portfolio. Goal number four, the recognized unifying organization for a system of city-owned historic assets in Raleigh. Marketing and communications will play an important role in this goal as we move forward. And finally, five, a financially and operationally sound organization, considering such strategies as program-wide affinity groups, equitable investments in all of our sites focusing on the underrepresented areas in Raleigh, as well as strengthening operations and programs. And so with that, Historic Resources and Museum Program, as well as our Historic Resources and Museum Advisory Board, are just asking council to receive this strategic plan as a point of information and advice. I'll hear for any questions.
So having ridden on the Heritage Bike Tour, it was an amazing experience, great exercise, but it was, it was a whole different way to see Raleigh and its history and have it interpreted. And just everything you're doing here is such a great thing to bring that history, that unique history of our city to the citizens and visitors. So I appreciate that.
Appreciate you saying that.
Any other councilors? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
We will now move into the petitions of citizens' part, since it is well after 2:00 PM. We will now have our first Beverly Clark. And just so everyone knows, it's three minutes per person that has actually signed up and one person at the podium at a time.
Well, and I think I erred in the sign-up because I signed up as Cameron Village neighbors and I didn't know who else. So I have another neighbor with me. Can she speak to, we're both really quick.
It's just one person, you have her three minutes.
Okay. Well, so this is regarding the Cameron Village NCOD request. And good afternoon, council members. I'm Beverly Clark of 719 Graham Street to 7605. I'm here today in support of the NCOD petition for the Cameron Village neighborhood. We are at the first step, requesting that staff conduct a neighborhood analysis. We respectfully request that you authorize staff to undertake the steps necessary to begin the NCOD process. Specifically, we are requesting that staff measure four of the 11 items listed in the UDO, setback, building height, lot width, and building placement. Ms. Sakoski was going to share with you the process that we've gone through to arrive at this point and I'm going to share with you how this aligns with the Cameron Village covenants. These same four items are addressed in the Cameron Village Protective Covenants that were recorded February 14, 1950, and amended in 1951. These covenants have been reviewed by legal counsel and while the covenants include some offensive provisions that are legally not applicable, with regard to the factors that are before us today, lot width, setback, height, and building placement, these covenants are still enforced and enforceable. In fact, with only two recent exceptions, almost all new houses and renovations in the neighborhood over almost 70 years have complied with the covenants with regard to setback, lot width, height, and building placement. That means that notwithstanding having some very contemporary homes on these four issues, all those houses comply. This is in part due to the fact that previously, the city's zoning was substantially in alignment with the neighborhood. The UDO changed lot widths and reduced setbacks to 10 feet. And these factors are in conflict with the legally enforceable Cameron Village covenants. We are hopeful that by focusing on the four most pertinent issues that this neighborhood survey will utilize valuable staff time in an efficient manner. Similarly, as we have discussed this with our neighbors, we have assured them that we are not seeking to stop change, but to manage it with the NCOD in a way that is compatible with the existing legal framework for building in Cameron Village. Having an NCOD will complement and codify the covenant requirements. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
All right, thank you. Quick question for staff on this and just for our clarification. They're asking for, to initiate the process to start an NCOD? Nothing has been done at this point?
That's right. They have met with us for informational reasons, but they are asking you to, to direct me to do the work of the study. Like the study I brought back to you about Willa Run earlier today.
Okay.
Can you, I'm sorry. Can you clarify to, in terms of what they're asking for as it relates to covenants that she talked about?
Sure. So a lot of neighborhoods in Raleigh, there are private covenants that are put in place by the developer at the time of development. This neighborhood is one of those. We saw those in the North Hills neighborhood. They're also present in North Ridge South and North Ridge, what, North Ridge North? And North, the two North ridges.
North and South.
Thanks. And also Willa Run has covenants that we discussed earlier today. So a lot of neighborhoods developed here, what like from the probably late 50s through even neighborhoods being built today have covenants put in place by the developer and they are set up to be enforced by the homeowners association in some form or fashion. It really varies among neighborhoods in Cameron Village. I think it specifically calls out that the Architectural Review Committee would. Would, oh, I'm sorry, any neighbor can enforce them. But the, the, ultimately, the city does not adjudicate those conflicts. Those are, have to be resolved between private parties. So the property owner who is violating the covenants and then whatever neighbor or neighborhood association chooses to pursue litigation there.
So this is no different than any of the NCODs, Northeast, all the ones that appear in, that have in Cameron Park? They're the same thing?
This is pretty typical, yes.
And there's still a petition process that's part of the study?
The petition process, so you all, there's no regulatory requirement to request the study. Historically, you all have indicated that you would like to see significant support from the neighborhood. So that's typically what we advise residents, that when they come with their petition, they should have a good number to make the request for the study, that they have a good number of neighbors signing on and Ms. Clark organized that. And then the only other time they would need the signatures, I believe, is at the actual time of rezoning.
Okay, so.
Isn't it typically 50% we try to ask?
50 plus one.
So Ms. Clark, how many, if you could come back?
52.8. We submitted more than 50%. It says here. We had a neighborhood meeting. We had a neighborhood meeting. We met first with Bynum and her staff and they were extraordinarily helpful in explaining the process to us. And, and then we had, went around, that's what Beth would have told you about, this extremely tedious process, but we met a lot of nice neighbors. But it is, it's a very time-consuming process with 119 houses in the neighborhood.
So I'm going to make a motion that we ask staff to do the first step process of reviewing step one. As it relates to identifying what's necessary.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second. Any questions?
Yes. Restricted covenants. Is this something we're still seeing developers put into place now or is this something that's historically been used?
So there are some elements of the covenants in the Cameron Village neighborhood that are no longer typical, but I believe that a lot of the lot size and setback requirements are typical of current arrangements.
I'm, I have pause. Based on what I've said earlier this afternoon, I'm also, what's really weighing on my heart on this is having read The Color of Law, which was all about how there is a legal case to be made that restricted covenants and our entire political system have create racist policies that have kept people out of neighborhoods is really weighing on my heart right now. And I get, it's giving me pause on this and it's giving me pause on all of our NCODs at this point and I'm just uncomfortable at this point with the process.
Well, I would say to you, I know Ms. Clark and that's absolutely not their intention.
I know it's not her intention. I know her as well. I know her as well. I know it's not your intention. And I'm speaking more from a historical perspective of what we now know restricted covenants have done over generations. And I don't, I want us to pause and think about the role we're now playing in codifying some of the things that were put in place through those.
So I want to make sure I understand, so are we suggesting that NCODs that we currently have in place or any of the people are coming in front of us currently, that somehow asking for one level of protection over what their base zoning is racist? I just want to make sure I understand.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying.
And that's why I'm asking for clarity.
No, I'm saying that the policies that were put in place previously have a steep, a steep history in racism. And so as we continue to move forward and build on top of those, that we need to, it's on us to stop and reflect on that history.
Okay, so let me, let me ask it in a different way.
Sure.
So are we saying that previous NCODs that the city initiated, we now might view them as. we now might view them as racist? I'm just trying to understand the basis. I know the book you're referring to.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out where, where the steps have been made till we get to that point. Because I don't think anyone in the community ever wants to make it so people aren't capable of living anywhere they want to. So, I just want to make sure, because nobody wants to be part of a policy that would be reflective of racism. So, I just want to make sure that we all agree that the request in front of us today is not to preclude people of any color of being able to live in the Cameron Village area because they're initiating an NCOD. I just want, I don't want to approve something or say yes moving something forward if we don't understand what it is we're saying yes to.
I was going to say, I think from what I'm hearing from Councilman Stewart is that, not necessarily this request, but just historically, looking at NCODs and how they were done, I don't think there's something that can be resolved on this issue, and it's probably more of a holistic conversation to have.
So, you were saying maybe you should review why NCO, I'm just trying to understand.
Review NCODs in their, historically, the, I think their underlying purpose of some of them. I don't, is that clearly, is that what you're saying? Because I want to put words in your mouth.
More as a tool as a whole, and kind of over time, is it time to move away from NCODs?
I don't know that I necessarily agree with that because you read that in a book that somebody wrote. I mean, I've lived here my entire...
I would love for you to read the book, and let's go have a book club.
I've lived here my entire life, and I just have not found that ever.
So, for this one, it's been moved and properly second. I call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right?
No.
All right. Motion passes Step One.
Can I add one point of clarification?
You just got what you wanted.
14 people, Beverly, please.
Just one statement. All of these are, everything that's in an NCOD is a measurable, quantifiable, not political statement.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. David Anderson.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dave Anderson. I live in 1209 Inora Drive in Apex. I have a statement that Senator Nicol asked me to convey. Senator Wiley Nicol represents the 16th Senate District, which includes...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is this your statement or his statement?
This is my statement.
Okay. Can you speak up into the mic?
Oh, sure, yeah. This is my statement, but he asked me to repeat a few words.
We'll hear your statement.
Senator Wiley Nicol represents the 16th Senate District, which includes the RDU Airport and all of the Umstead State Park. He was in attendance today, but had to leave for votes in the Senate, and had, and had signed up to address the council on the RDU rock quarry issue. He believes that the city of Raleigh has a right to vote on the sale of this property, and he asked the council to join in a lawsuit for a declaratory judgment to determine whether the city of Raleigh has the right to approve the sale of this property. Umstead State Park and Lake Crabtree County Park are real gems that improve the quality of life of our citizens and the attractiveness of our region to businesses. They're centrally located and a critical hub on our Greenway Network. The RDU Rock Quarry project will damage these assets. It runs counter to the planning and investments that made this recreation district so special. Normally, a zoning process would come into play to evaluate the appropriateness of putting an industrial mining operation in a recreation district. RDU deems themselves their own zoning authority, failing to take a critical, big-picture look at the implications and the damage this will cause their largest neighbor, Umstead State Park. The critical and needed question I think you should be asking is a new rock quarry on your public lands in the public's best interest? As one of the four owners of this property, I think this is exactly where the city has a role to play. It is Raleigh, not RDU Airport Authority, that needs to evaluate this decision on the broader merits and the impact beyond the airport. Thanks for your time. It's been a long afternoon. Appreciate your attention.
Thank you. All right. Charles Morris.
Hello. My name is Charles Morris. I live at 119 Lantern Way in Carrow, North Carolina. And I'm also here in support of expanding Umstead State Park and not turning the area into a rock quarry. And I have a video that I'm going to be showing to use up the balance of my time. If I can get it to work here. Oh, that is the wrong one. Here we go. I got it, I think. The Umstead Recreation District is the most popular outdoor forested recreation area in the Triangle. This is a prized asset that defines our region. Decades of strategic planning and tens of millions of dollars in investments have aligned to create this amazing Greenway system connecting Raleigh, Cary, Morrisville, and Durham to Umstead State Park. And the investments have paid off. Employees and businesses benefit from our renowned quality of life and forested green space. The intensity of these lines indicates usage levels. This corridor is one of the most used Greenway corridors in the Triangle, and it's part of the East Coast Greenway Trail System. Lake Crabtree is the most visited Wake County Park, and Umstead State Park saw 1.8 million visitor days per year, which is up 35% from the previous year. But many are surprised when they learn that the Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority and Wake Stone plan to quarry this land, which is known as the Oddfellows Tract. It borders Umstead State Park, the East Coast Greenway, and Crabtree Creek. If this lease is allowed, here's what we'll see in here for the next 25 years. There's a better alternative. The Conservation Fund and North Carolina State Parks want to buy the Oddfellows Tract, preserving it for all of us to enjoy as an addition to Umstead Park. In fact, over 18,000 petition signers and a going list of local businesses support preserving this land. Do we quarry this land, destroying it forever and damaging the tranquility of the nearby parks? Or do we preserve it as part of Umstead State Park and support the recreational demands of Triangle residents?
Thank you. Thank you.
Tamara Dunn. Can you hear me now? My name is Tamara Dunn. I live at 2232 Old Reedy Creek Road, and I am your neighbor. I say that because along with the governing bodies of Wake and Durham County and the city of Durham, you own the tract known as the Oddfellows Tract, which is right next to my house and where the airport wants to put a quarry. Since the first public meeting in June 2016 that we attended, I've been trying to get answers from the RDU Authority and my elected leaders on how this will impact myself and our neighbors, our homes, and our quality of life. What I've gotten are flippant answers, platitudes, and silence. We've been ignored, and we've been felt threatened. At the first meeting, the airport staff and authority members would pass us off from one to the other whenever we would ask questions about potential damage to our wells, buffers, noise pollution, air quality, or the impact on the foundations to our homes and to our property value. When I finally did get an answer from a member of the RDU Authority, it was flippant. He said, "Look at it this way. In 30 years, you'll have lakeside property," which is actually untrue because, along with being flippant, it was kind of ignorant of the outcome because we won't have lakeside property. My response was, "You mean when I'm 90?" He then said, "Well, your children will have lakeside property then," which is also untrue, as the engineers have explained to us. My response was not kid-friendly. So, when I asked the airport CEO why they hadn't bothered to reach out to the neighbors directly, because there's really only three of us, he responded, "Well, we didn't know how to get in touch with you." Yet, they knew our address well enough to put it into the lease with Wake Stone, should they be able to purchase our property, which I think is a little presumptuous. I listened to the airport lawyer. I sat in court and listened to the airport lawyer say to Judge Ridgeway, "Well, you know, there's really only two owners impacted by this." There's actually three of us. To date, no one from Wake Stone, RDU Authority, or the staff has bothered to sit down with myself or our neighbors and explain how this will impact us. No one has gone over buffers or how it will affect our quality of life or our property values. When you get to the heart of the matter, the community owns the airport and the lands they manage. We elect our officials to manage our resources and assets. The public has made their feelings clear with every poll, meeting, and petition. We don't want another rock quarry. As our leaders, we need you to speak for us. As we've worked through the process, I've heard commissioners and council members state, "It's not my job. It's not our responsibility." But as our elected leaders and listed owners on the land, I have to ask, whose responsibility is it then, and who do we ask to intervene?
Thank you.
Any questions?
You have a question?
I have a question. As we're looking at this map, where does Mrs. Dunn's property exist at on the map?
Oh, it's the wedge.
Okay. The blue, that, the blue area, the kind of...
See what's green there, always?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah, it's this little, well... There you go. It's the wedge. Yes.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I understand Senator Nicol had to leave, so William Duchette?
William Duchette. I live at 1703 Nottingham Road in Raleigh, North Carolina. My comments concern confusion over the nature of the so-called RDU mineral lease. This is a lease in name only. Rather, it is a contract with the sole purpose of allowing Wake Stone Corporation, a private business, to remove and sell public property on the open market, specifically the very soil and rock that constitutes the Oddfellows Tract. It is not comparable to a land lease for a hotel or gas station, as neither involve the sale of public property as a business model. Post-quarry, and this is another difference, the tract is going to be returned to Raleigh, to RDU, missing 45 acres or more of real land replaced with a crater hundreds of feet deep with no commercial value. We believe the RDU Rock Quarry Mineral Lease is subject to the authority of the four elected municipal governments that, under North Carolina law, own this airport. North Carolina General Statute 63-56F states that no real property and no airport, other airport, other air navigation facility, or air protection privileged, owned jointly, you jointly own it, shall be disposed of by the Board, the RDU AA, for sale or otherwise, except by authority of the appointed governing bodies, that's you. But the Board may lease space, area, or improvements and grant concessions on the airports for aeronautical purposes or purposes incidental thereof. A for-profit commercial quarry is not an aeronautical purpose, nor is it incidental to an aeronautical purpose. This specific statute is referenced in minutes from the RDU AA and the city of Raleigh concerning the approval for sale of RDU timber. So, if it applies to timber being sold at RDU, it has to apply to the rocks. And the question is, is why are you not exercising this authority? We ask you to take ownership and act on this previously exercised authority or join us in our suit and confirm that that's the case. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Jean Spooner, Chair of the Umstead Coalition, 2401 Trinity Farms Road. Most of our supporters had to leave, but those who still stuck it out, could you please stand? Appreciate it. We had a lot more here before, as you knew. We urge the city of Raleigh to fulfill your duty and responsibility to your citizens as stated in North Carolina state law. Please demand that the RDU Airport Authority follow the law and obtain approval from the four local governments before transferring our public property to a private, for-profit rock quarry. Specifically, we ask you to join our lawsuit or file your own declaratory action. This issue needs public evaluation and transparency. Wake Stone proposes a new, separate quarry pit, as you can see from the graphics, more than 44 stories deep on the other side of Crabtree Creek. As that graphic illustrates, Crabtree Creek would be confined between two huge dry pits with potential for catastrophic failure. I'll be glad to share more of that with you if you want out offline. We would lose environmentally sensitive forested land that currently protects water quality and minimize the stormwater runoff. Stormwater would channelize into the suspended Crabtree Creek, adding to downstream flooding. This area is one of the most popular regional Greenway hubs, which you have invested heavily in. Millions use the Old Reedy Creek Corridor. And this quarry would disrupt and fragment this wildlife and recreational corridor that connects Umstead State Park, East Coast Greenway, Crabtree Creek, House Creek, American Tobacco Trail, Neuse River, you get the idea, and more. Yeah. A quarry here is not a good public deal. There are better ways to preserve natural, public tracks by providing a permanent revenue stream to the airport, increasing recreational activities, improving our quality of life, and help attract and retain employers and employees. Several other quarries in this area already meet the demand and are in the close proximity, the same proximity, as this proposed quarry. This is not like other leases at RDU, our airport that does not serve an airport purpose. This one doesn't serve an airport. It is a sale of your property, truckload by truckload. A private quarry has no aeronautical purpose. The city of Raleigh is a deeded owner of this property. When Raleigh is disposing of public property acquired with public funds for non-airport purposes, the four local governments are required to have a say under state law. I think this is exactly the situation our state legislature intended to address when it passed this legislation. This would be the first private rock quarry on public lands in North Carolina and set a bad precedent, which is not in the interest of Raleigh or North Carolina or a region. You have the right, and more importantly, the responsibility to have a voice in this extremely important precedent-setting community issue on your property. Good governance requires such.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabel Maddox, PO Box 946, Raleigh 27602. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim Branch and members of the council. I'm here today representing the Umstead Coalition to conclude this group of speakers by summarizing our legal situation. First, I want to say, we do not oppose Wake Stone or the Bratton family. Wake Stone has been a good corporate citizen, and the Brattons are good people. But we also recognize the community's needs for quarries, but not on this public property at this time. So, just to be clear about this property, the so-called Oddfellows Tract is owned by the city of Raleigh, Wake County, Durham County, and the city of Durham. It was acquired, deeded into those four local governments in the 1970s. RDU Airport Authority does not own this property. But on two days' notice and with no public comment or debate, RDU Airport Authority approved and signed a lease of this publicly-owned property to a private company for a quarry. They were not transparent. They have not been accountable to the public. And most importantly, they have not followed the state law entering into this lease for non-aeronautical purposes. That is why the Umstead Coalition and four other plaintiffs filed a lawsuit against them in March. There are three different provisions of state law that have been violated. First, the Airport Authority acted outside of its scope of authority contained in the enabling legislation. While RDU is allowed to sign some leases to support airport functions, like restaurants or... or car rental lots, that authority does not extend to leases for non-airport purposes. Secondly, under North Carolina General Statute 63-56F, RDU is required to obtain the approval of the four owning municipalities before disposing of real property for non-aeronautical purposes. And there is precedent, as you've heard, that the city of Raleigh, as well as the other three local governments, have signed previously timber conveyances, very similar to the mineral rights that we're talking about here today. Although with timber, the trees can regrow. With taking out five hundred truckloads a day, sometimes, of stone, that's not going to be returned. And third, RDU is considered a municipality, and municipalities are required to follow a number of procedures for leases in excess of one year. And actually, leases for over ten years are treated as sales under municipal law, requiring notice and a public bidding process. Those processes were not followed here. This lease of public property to a private business to operate a non-aeronautical purpose warrants a careful review and a public debate by the cities and counties that own this property. This city is all about stakeholder engagement, transparency, accountability. But from what we've seen, the only chance of that is getting the city and county approval of this conveyance of real estate. That's the only vehicle through which the public process will happen. So we ask that you intervene in this lawsuit, and appreciate your time today.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam Bratton?
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Bratton. I'm president of Wakestone Corporation. My home address is 3412 Williamsburg Court in Raleigh, 27609. Wakestone is a Wake County company run by Wake County residents and has been for fifty years. We own and operate four North Carolina quarries, two in Wake County, plus quarries in Lee and Nash Counties, in addition to one operation in South Carolina. My father founded the company with a commitment to being good stewards of the land, good to the communities in which we operate, and good to our employees. My brothers and I have continued that commitment, and we have the track record to prove it. We have won numerous awards for our commitment to the environment, not just within our industry, but including awards not won by any other quarry company, including Wake County Soil Conservation, Urban Conservation Award, North Carolina Wildlife Federation Governor's Land Conservationist of the Year Award, Greater Raleigh Chamber of Commerce Entrepreneurial Company of the Year, North Carolina Family Business of the Year, North Carolina Land Trust Corporate Conservation Award. In addition, we give back to our communities. Nowhere shows that more than our hometown of Knightdale, where we have supported everything the town has asked us to do for more than fifty years. Most recently, in 2018, at their request, we donated fifty acres of land with a fair-market value of two and a half million dollars to the town for its recreation department. Specifically, to the Triangle Quarry next to Umstead Park, we have won awards. But more importantly, from the beginning of its permitting, we do not have a single violation of our state permits regulating our air, noise, dust, water, or stormwater discharge. We have been an excellent neighbor to Umstead Park, as any of their superintendents will tell you. For the past twenty-five years, we've been a participating member of the Umstead Park Advisory Committee with Dr. Spooner. In 1999, Dr. Spooner wrote a letter of recommendation for the company. Let me quote, "In the ten years that I've been a member of the Umstead Coalition, I have never heard a complaint about Wakestone's operation next to Umstead. Our experience with Wakestone has been positive. They are accessible and willing to participate in activities to protect Umstead State Park. Our track record as individuals and corporate citizens of Wake County is exemplary and stand up to anyone's scrutiny. However, it does not stop people from trespassing on our property or making false statements to influence public officials." On March 1st, the RDU Board voted unanimously to lease one hundred and five acres to Wakestone. They had studied this agreement thoroughly and saw the benefits for our entire area: a strong catalyst for economic development, and even more viable airport, much-needed revenue for capital improvements, better roads, less traffic, jobs for our citizens, and even a park designated for mountain bikers. My request is that you honor the airport authority's decision. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Bratton, thank you for your remarks. I do have a question for you, though. Would you be willing to support a public process whereby the four municipalities vote on this quarry? And would you support their decision by withdrawing your project for a quarry?
That's a matter for the airport and the airport authority, not for us. We're not going to get involved in that. That needs to be the airport authority's call. There is a public process that we're going to go through with the mining permit application. All the agencies of the state government, from cultural resources to state park system, land quality, air quality, water quality, will all have input. There'll be a public hearing at that time. There is going to be a public process and an open process. And so, we believe that's the right process for us to move forward. We don't believe that there...
But not a public process?
And we're being sued right now by the Umstead Coalition in Torque and some of the individuals here. So I don't think I can comment on that.
Well, okay, but it sounds like you would not support a public process whereby the city of Raleigh and the other three municipalities were to vote on this issue?
I'm not going to comment on that.
All right. Thank you.
Tom Oxholm?
Do you mind taking that off the screen, since it's somebody else's rendition of what's not going to happen? Thank you. Very good. My name is Tom Oxholm. I'm proud to be a thirty-four-year employee of Wakestone, Vice President, and I live at 7301 Bay Hill Court in Raleigh. As elected officials, I'm sure you know the pain of reading and hearing things about yourselves that are not true. That is one of the prices you pay for public service, even more so today than when I served sixteen years ago. What our company's learning this year is that false accusations can be made about private citizens and companies, especially on the internet, with little opportunity to rebut them. A sad state of affairs. As to some of the comments you've heard this afternoon, you need to know these facts about the option to lease we have executed with RDU. It's an option for thirty months for us to figure out how to mine this land. We are three months into it. By the way, we called Mrs. Dunn in March and tried to meet with her. She never returned the call. But to figure out how to mine that property is going to take us most of that thirty months, and will involve the mining permit hearing that Sam referred to. We have a model for our success that's right next door. We've been operating there for thirty-eight years, two-hundred-and-nineteen acres, and we've produced over fifty million tons of aggregate that have been consumed in this community. And we've done it with no mining permit violations and no complaints in the thirty-eight years about us, not from the park, not from Mrs. Spooner. Recently, a video by Mr. Morris featuring Jean Spooner accused Wakestone of violating our state permit and polluting Crabtree Creek. And we were supposedly, according to them, using processed water from the quarry operation and discharging into the creek. For the record, we have never discharged water from the mining operation into the Crabtree Creek, nor polluted it. State mining specialist Bill Denton's report on this complaint stated, "There was no evidence of any violations, nor of any pollution." These comments that Mr. Spooner, Ms. Spooner, and Mr. Morris continue to post on the internet are out there for people to see, things like, "There's no guarantee of the revenue to the airport." We're very confident, if we exercise the mining lease, we will meet or exceed the revenue estimates we gave RDU. The completed quarry is a liability. The completed quarry is going to be filling with water, rainwater. It'll be fenced, and it'll be a two-billion-gallon reservoir for RDU. They remember the drought of 2007. We degrade air and water quality and create downstream flooding. In our thirty-eight years of operations, we have met or exceeded all air and water quality requirements and never, never caused downstream flooding. Ms. Spooner says, "We ought to, we are going to quarry the one hundred and fifty-one acre parcels that's set aside for the bike center." That's never been discussed and not true, and you know we've denied that. We thank you for your time and request the airport authority's unanimous vote to do what's best for the airports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Birch?
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tim Branch, members of council. Michael Birch, 2235 Gateway Access, Suite 201, Raleigh 27607. On a completely unrelated note, we are here asking councils consent for the relocation of a family cemetery to Oakwood Cemetery, working with the family, the property owner, and adjacent property owner bringing forward this request. So the Parton family no longer lives next to the cemetery. They've moved out to the eastern part of the county. And the new owner of the property, the adjacent property, and the family have all agreed to move these to Oakwood Cemetery, so that the family and anybody else is no longer responsible for the maintenance of that, that it'll be in Oakwood, where it's also more easily accessible. So happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Yeah, so, Michael, there are no descendants, living descendants of the Parton family? Is that...
No, so the Parton-McCall family owned, actually owned property immediately adjacent to the property that, where the graves are currently located. They have all sold their property in the last month and have moved to the eastern part of the county. As a part of that transaction, the purchaser agreed to relocate that family cemetery to another cemetery in Wake County. They've chosen Oakwood, and so at that new owner's cost and expense, they're doing that.
Yeah, but, Robin, I have to refer to you on this, because I always thought that you have to have the permission of the descendants in order to do that.
And, and we do. We've, again, been working with the...
See that in here?
Yeah, so, I mean, we can...
What document do you have, Michael?
Yeah.
I didn't see it.
No, and it's not in your, in your backup, but it was part of the contract between the family who was selling all of the land and...
I think we would at least need to see that and let Robin see it.
Yeah, the statute requires that you give notice to the next of kin, and I think that they have done that and been communicating, but I think what, after all of that's been done, it's still within your discretion. So regardless, I think if that's something that you would like to see and you have it, Michael, that'd be great.
Yeah, we can provide that to, to council. They were very involved in the production of the historic archaeology report. They were very helpful in giving that information, and they want to see it moved so that they can have access. I don't have their kind of, you know, written expression of consent, but we can bring that back at your, at your next meeting, if that's what council would like. But they've been very much a part of this process.
So we can just hold this and let you provide that, or maybe one of the family members can attend and just speak to it, and so we'll just hold this until the next council meeting?
Perfect. That'd be great.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Daniel Boobolds? Hopefully, did I say that correct?
That's fine, sir, thank you.
All right. Mr. Branch, I need to be excused, please.
Okay, all right. Councilman, Councilman Thompson had a previous engagement. He's excused.
My name is Daniel Boobolds. I'm from 527 Keasler Drive, Cary. Thank you, council, for granting me a few minutes of your time today to address you. Over the past ten weeks, you have been addressed by several men and women regarding the child sacrifice that takes place every day in your city. It was made abundantly clear to you that an average of twenty-five children are murdered every day in your city. It was made known to you exactly how, where, and at what times this genocide takes place. Before ten weeks ago, you may have been unaware or perhaps misinformed, but now you know full well. They respectfully pleaded with you, and they informed you of your God-given responsibility to intervene and to stop wrongdoings. They also shared with you the riches of God's grace and the availability of salvation through the Creator of all things, Jesus the Messiah. Over the last ten weeks, your inaction has now caused one thousand five hundred children to be slaughtered, not to mention the countless others who were murdered by various forms of pills. So today, I have come to warn you of God's judgment. If you do not repent, these one thousand five hundred-plus children will cry out against you on the day of judgment. In God's holy courtroom, they will testify against each one of you by name. One of them will say, "Nicole Stewart, she allowed my skull to be crushed by surgical forceps and my body to be vacuum-sucked out of my mother's womb. Lord, avenge her and repay her for what she deserves." Another will say, "Corey Branch, he allowed my body to be starved of oxygen. I was suffocated to death. Then a chemically-forced menstruation occurred, and my blackened and charred body was flushed down the toilet. Lord, unleash on him your full punishment." Yet another will say, "Mr. Thompson, he allowed a sharp surgical knife to dismember my body, and while I was fatally bleeding, I was extracted from my home by a suction tube. Lord, pour out your cup of wrath upon him." I plead with you, council, today not to harden your hearts. God says in Romans 2, "That is the hardness of your hearts; you are storing up wrath for yourselves on the day of wrath." But I tell you today, council, there's no condemnation for those who are in Christ Jesus. By the grace of God, He has spared every one of your lives today. If you repent and you call in the name of the Lord, while He still will hear you, you will be saved. Thank you again for your time.
Maria?
Say again, sir?
The next person.
Okay.
Miriam.
Miriam. She can step to the side.
My name is Marion Rogan at 102 Graygate Place, 27518. When I was a baby, my mom and daddy adopted me. I think adoption is a great choice. It's a picture of the gospel. I think abortion is terrible. God said that abortion is murder. As an adopted person, I think it especially said that these babies aren't not given a chance to live their lives. If you were able to ask the baby, or you ask me, I'd rather be adopted than aborted. I would want to be given a chance to live. I'm also an African-American person. In some states, more African-American babies are aborted than born. This is horrible. Planned parenthood is destroying African families. In fact, since 1975, abortion has disgraced the African-American population by twenty-five percent. This reminds me of Exodus 1 and 2, when Pharaoh killed all Hebrew babies. When Mother Spirit was sent by hiding him, God used him to say, "Let my people go," and he led them out of slavery. My brother was also adopted. His name was Moses, after this great man in the Bible. Moses had a sister named Miriam. I named after her. She was a great prophetess. She spoke the words of the Lord. And I say to you, abortion is wrong, just like slavery is wrong. People need to stand up for what is right. Adults say it's not that easy. But in 1955, Rosa Parks disobeyed Alabama's laws and refused to give up her seat on the bus. Even though she was arrested, she was later the first woman to lie in honor of Capitol Rotunda. Maybe you might lose your job if you stand up for children like me, but I ask you, would it be worth it? Exodus, Chapter 12, Verse 13, says, "You shall not murder." This is a lot. You are allowing people to break this every single day. I ask you to turn this into evil and turn to Jesus. He will forgive you and adopt you into His family, which will last forever. In heaven, there is no sadness or sin. We are sinful people, and we need a Savior. Jesus will save you from your sins. I also ask you to make this city a sanctuary for children like me and stop the bloodshed. You have the power to stand up like Rosa Parks and bring justice to the city. Thank you and have a nice day.
Thank you. Daisy?
My name is Lila Wofneck from 102 Graygate Place, Cary 27518. Dear mayor and city council members, abortion is a big deal. Every day, hundreds and hundreds of innocent babies are killed. In Exodus, Chapter 20, Verse 13, it says, "You shall not murder." The Bible also says, "Do unto others as you would have them do to you." What I'm trying to say is, what if you were one of those babies? You would not want to be killed. I think if you ask any child if it's okay to tear a baby out of its mom, they would say, "No way." I also think adults get confused about right and wrong, and they need to take a stand. Me and my mom love babies, and we stand together at the abortion clinics. Seeing the mothers drive into that terrible murderous place is very upsetting, but sometimes women talk to my mom, and I choose life. After the baby's born, sometimes they send us pictures of their adorable babies. It is obviously better to have a living baby wrapped in a warm blanket than to be chopped up into pieces and put in a garbage can. I also cannot see how the city expects God's blessing while it does things that make God mad. Pawparks, Chapter 6, Verses 16 to 19, says, "There are six things the Lord hates, seven that are abomination to Him: proud eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that set innocent blood; a heart that makes wicked plans; feet that run to evil; a false witness who says lies; and one who discord among brothers." Here, God is clearly telling us in a way that any child can understand that He hates abortion. Babies in the tummy are innocent blood. It is wicked, it is a wicked plan... It is wicked, it is a wicked plan to drive into that terrible clinic, abortion clinic, near my house and pay someone to inject your own, your own baby with poison or have its arms or legs ripped off. We should stop this immediately. I'm asking you, will you please stop abortion today in Raleigh by making the city a sanctuary for the unborn babies? I'm also asking you that you believe in Jesus Christ today. He died on the cross for your sins and mine. If you repent and turn to Jesus, I am sure that you will see that abortion is very wrong. Thank, thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. Melissa?
My name is Melissa Rognak of 102 Gray Gate Place, Cary, 27518. I am a follower of Jesus Christ, an adoptive mother of eight children, some with severe special needs. And I am by previous profession, a teacher of the classics, the liberal arts, and American and ancient history. As a history teacher, I am here to tell you that by your inaction in this matter, you are actually violating the Constitution, which does not permit abortion but prohibits it by protecting it, the preborn within the historical context of the word person in the 14th Amendment. As an adoptive mother of eight children, some with severe special needs, I stand here today in disgust of the rhetoric that uses my adopted and disabled children as scapegoats to justify abortion by reasoning that they would be better off dead. Our lives are greatly affected by this because one of my, our adopted children is what is medically referred to in prenatal testing as incompatible with life. And yet she sits here behind me, a treasure to our family, while other children like her are undergoing mass extermination. Jesus glorifies Himself in these children and they are to be treated as royalty, not refuse. It is not the right of you or any other human being to determine the value of a life. Her worth lies outside of herself because her value comes from her Creator, not from her abilities or how she compares to others. She is made in the image of the Almighty God. And Genesis 9:6 forbids the murder of image bearers, saying, "Whoever sheds the blood of man, by man shall his blood be shed; for God made man in his own image." Here in Raleigh, we are treating unwanted and disabled children as less than human. Anytime a government enforces the idea that one person is of less value than another, we are repeating the mindsets that gave way to legalize slavery. Think of the elected officials in the time of slavery who knew better and yet prolonged abolition or supported incrementalism because they were unwilling to defend, offend slaveholders, commerce, or culture. You are the modern day version of these officials. Pragmatism and politicking are not for matters of life and death, and there will be a reckoning. Perhaps history will repeat itself in abortion as slavery in the Holocaust before it will be seen rightly by governments. History is not kind in retrospect to those who are silent during the mass extermination of people groups. But praise God, history is not our final judge, God is. And His day of reckoning is coming for us all. You will be responsible for what you did to protect the disabled and unwanted peoples in our community with this authority that God has given to you here in this office. And each of us will be held accountable for our lives. All have sinned and fall short of the glory of God and everyone from the choir director to the abortion worker needs a Savior. God came down in the person of Jesus Christ, lived a sinless death, died on the cross as the penalty for our sins, and rose again defeating death. All those with blood on their hands can come to Him in repentance because His, His hands were bloodied for them. He is a sanctuary for the sinner who will turn to Him in repentance and believe on Him for salvation.
Thank you. Paul?
Paul Rognak, 102 Gray Gate Place, Cary, North Carolina. Obviously, we have moved the subject from rocks to people. And this is more important. I want to take you back to 1944 where General Patton toured the Buchenwald concentration camp after the liberation of the Nazi camps and was so horrified by what he saw and he commanded his, that the citizens and the mayor of the surrounding city be made to march through what was hidden away in their town. Gas chambers, lampshades made with human skin. There is video footage of these citizens walking in, adjusting their pearls, scarves, and laughing with their friends. On the way out of the tour, they were holding each other up, weeping and covering their faces in anguish as, by their hands and feet. And they saw these things, these things were not hidden away. They were, they were right there and they saw what was going on. As for all of us today, we know what's going on at the abortuaries. The question is not, the question is, are we willing to face it? As a minister, as we stand my family outside the Raleigh abortion clinic, a worker gate, who quit, gave us a photo of her holding what a Cary OBGYN identified as approximately a 20-week-year-old baby in a small trash can filled with blood. The size of banana, legs curled dangling, every part of him looking like a beautiful baby. Pink skin, tiny eye skins, beautiful skin in every way, except for his skull cap had been crushed, which had been gruesely removed just moments before. And several small bruises scattered on his limbs where tiny body, body had been bludgeoned with instruments. If you're to hold this picture up right now, and I'll pass around a copy, offered, it would make you sick, and it will. We can see the obvious offense when viewing a lampshade made with human skin or mutilating a 20-week-old baby corpse. But the, but the truth is that abortion is absolutely offensive at the moment of conception. When we, when we are what David prophetically called unformed substance. He says, "My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret, intricate movement in the depths of the earth. I saw, you saw my unformed surface." I'm asking the city council members repent from their sins and become a merciful sanctuary, a kind of place that protects the rights of citizens, of babies, and that they're not thrown into garbage and disposals a few feet away as we drive by them on work or raising our children. It requires a heart of stone to look upon the everyday murders of babies and not take action when you have the power to do something. But God says, "I will take out your heart of stone and put in a beating heart of flesh, as you have already defied sin through the death and resurrection and become, and He can make you born again and make you bold to defend the children." Therefore, we are ambassadors of Christ, as though God were making an appeal through us. We beg you on behalf of Christ, be reconciled to God. He made him who knew no sin to be sin on our behalf so that we might become the righteousness of God in him.
Thank you. We'll now move on our public hearing to unfit building demolitions, property liens. Do we have? Is there anyone here to speak to this? All right, what I do is I will open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Anyone, sir, sir, you can't come up here.
You can't come back there, I'm sorry.
Sir, can you, can you pass that off to the clerk?
To the clerk.
All right, thank you. Again, is there anyone else here to speak to unfit building demolitions? Anyone here to speak to it? Anyone to speak to it? I will close the hearing. Does the staff have at least some information they can provide?
Well, there's information in your background. The site has already been demolished and so this is just the property lien. So you're holding a public hearing on the property lien. We, we're available to answer questions.
Okay, any, I'll open the hearing, I asked three times, I closed the hearing. Back to council, anyone like to speak to this? Any comments, questions, or motion?
Adopt the resolution confirming liens against the property.
Just a quick, just a quick question. I mean, you, the property owners have been contacted?
Uh, yes. We can, I mean, I can ask staff to comment that specifically if you like.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Mr. Abernathy from Housing Neighborhoods is here to answer that question.
Yes, sir. They've been contacted, first-class certified mail, phone calls for years, for several years.
You've spoken?
Uh, my predecessor has.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The reason I ask is because I have a situation where a property owner claims they were contacted.
I'm familiar with what you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay, all right. It's been moved in properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right, motion carries. Um, we now have comprehensive plan amendment, CP 4A. And is there anyone here to speak to this amendment? Okay, we'll let you give a high level.
Good evening.
It's still afternoon. It's not sit yet.
This is a comprehensive plan amendment to apply a future land use map, future land use map designation to 12221 Strickland Road. Staff initiated this. It is consistent with the plan. Your planning commission recommends approval. They revised the staff recommendation. The staff recommendation started the conversation at a very moderate place. And planning commission went to the CAC and the planning commission went to a more activist place that staff wasn't going to start there, but the community went there. And so that's where we stand. So lots of consistent policies. So the initial recommendation was to take this unmapped area. So we're on the south side of Strickland, near the intersection with Baileywick. From no designation to a moderate density residential designation. The community support here was for neighborhood mixed use on the south side of Strickland and rural residential on the north side of Strickland. That rural residential piece doesn't change. It's the portion south of Strickland in the, that comes forward in the community conversation, right? So rural residential to match the other rural residential north of Strickland and the neighborhood mixed use to match the property to the west, rather than moderate density matching the property to the east. Uh, and so here's a look at the site. You have some multifamily to the east and then a shopping center with a food line and an out parcel there to the west. Again, consistent with the plan and recommended for approval by the planning commission and the northwest CAC with revision from the initial proposal. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from council? So now I'll now open the hearings. Is anyone here to speak for this? Anyone to speak against this? Anyone here to speak at all? I close the hearing, bring it back to council.
So I'm not sure, are we, are you giving us two alternate recommendations here?
No, sir, I'm presenting the planning commission's recommendation at this point, which would be for neighborhood mixed use on the south side.
All right, so it's been moved in properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same right, motion carries. All right, comprehensive plan, CP 4B.
So these next ones were similar situation where there's no designation on the future land use map now. And staff is recommending a designation, given where it's located in our ETJ. And planning commission recommends approval of these. They were all vetted with the relevant CAC, so southwest, north, and central. All received these as information and none of them chose to take a vote. Uh, so we have a parcel on Lake Wheeler, one on Baileywick, another on Mechanical, and the final one on Capitol. Uh, and you can see the proposed future land use map. I'm going to move ahead to the maps because I think that's more helpful. So this property on Lake Wheeler Road backs up to the railroad here on the east side. And the Lake, Lake Wheeler, it's odd that this has a Lake Wheeler address, but, because it's landlocked. Uh, but so the recommendation here is to match the pattern of future land use map on the area immediately to the north, which is a combination of moderate density and public parks and open space. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have to open the hearing.
If you like, you can have, hold one hearing for all of them.
Right.
Thank you.
So, yeah, let's do that.
And so here's what that looks like. So you're just southwest of Tryon Road here. Baileywick, here, here on the north side of Baileywick at Hunter. The recommendation here is to extend the rural residential designation to this parcel to match the, it's a, developed as a single-family house now, I believe. And then to match the rural residential to the south on Baileywick there. Questions about the Baileywick proposal?
So was there a PC or neighborhood vote?
Yes. Uh, so here, we're adjacent to Magellan Charter School and just north of Baileywick Elementary. The, consistent with the plan, there's no outstanding, North CAC, planning commission recommended approval of all of these and North CAC did not choose to vote. Mechanical Boulevard, this would extend the business and commercial services designation onto this parcel. Again, planning commission recommends approval and the relevant CAC did not vote. So you're just southwest of the NC Highway Patrol facility, right on the edge of Garner. It's our border between Raleigh and Garner. Again, consistent with the plan and the central CAC receive for information. A parcel up on Capitol, recommending a public parks and open space designation here. So you can see you're on the, adjacent to the Neuse River Trail on the west side of Capitol. Uh, this is, I believe, just north of the Mallon Cryt facility that's showing up down here. And right on our border with Wake Forest and also close to our border with Wake County. Again, consistent with the plan, the North CAC received as information and the planning commission does recommend approval. So those are the four pieces there.
Okay, I will now open, any questions from council on these? I now open the hearing on all four items. Is there anyone here to speak to this matter? Is there anyone here to speak to it? Is there anyone here to speak? All right, I close the hearing, bring it back to council.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved in properly second for approval, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes, thank you. Petitions and annexations, various locations. Is there anyone here to speak to Urban Church Road? First of all, I'm, I'm going to open the hearing. These are for annexations for Urban Church Road, Old Pool Road, and Milltown Market Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak?
Uh, for the Auburn Church Road, I'm Charlie Townsend, I'm the engineer on the project for James River Equipment.
You can come, come up. No problem.
Charlie Townsend, 2141 Ramsgate Street, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603.
Just going to bring up for you as well, your, that, the actual annexation, so you can have something visual. Sorry to interrupt. There we go.
Uh, I'm Charlie Townsend, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'm here representing my client, James River Equipment. Brian Dillenbeck, the general manager of James River Equipment is here. We just wanted to make ourselves available to you should you have any questions.
Any questions from anyone? I see it is contiguous, contiguous.
Pretty straightforward, but-
Due to the property next to it. Any questions? All right, I think we're good. Is anything else you want to say?
We're here just in case.
Okay, all right. We can probably open the hearing for all three. Is there anyone here to speak to Old Pool Road or Milltown Market? Again, anyone to speak to any of these items? I close the hearing, bring it back to the table.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second.
All three of them, Ms. Crowder?
Yes, yes ma'am, I'm sorry.
It's been moved in properly second to approve all three annexations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We'll now move to committees, economic development, and innovation. Councilwoman Stewart, since you're still here, are you good with June 25th for this one? Okay, so we're going to actually have EDI on June 25th. We will counsel the meeting for May 28th for EDI. Okay. And it'll be at the same time, three, it'll be at 3 o'clock in room 305. All right. Um, growth in natural resources?
Yes, the next growth in natural resources meeting will be held when? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I got a little, it's written wrong here, so let me go back and report out. The subdivision of lots and infill settings, the committee recommends the council submit the attached draft ordinance to the planning commission for a review and recommendation. I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second on the subdivision. Make sure I say it right, the subdivision of lots and infill settings. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Crowder?
To the planning commission, yes ma'am.
Can you remind me where this originated from and what problem we're trying to solve?
I do think that this came through staff coming to us with many things that we were updating with Omnibus and other things. And this was one that was brought forth and I believe that I asked to look at subdivisions as recombinations. And I think one of our attempts to do that was this might be a way to help the number of NCODs that were being created as a possible solution to eliminate as many as- of NCODs that were being created as a possible solution to eliminate as many as there seems to be created and the reasons why people need it. So, it was a way to have another set of rules or ordinances that would make it more palatable for people to look at this as opposed to... As an infill standard, as opposed to always looking at an NCOD.
Okay. So, it's another tool in our kit.
It's an ordinance.
And from here, this would go to planning and then...
Planning commission. Yes, ma'am.
And out for a public comment. Correct?
Yes. Then it would come back from... We'd have to set for public hearing back to the council.
Thank you.
Yep. So, it'll be two times. Planning commission to have a public hearing, and then we will have one once it comes back to us. So, it's been moved in properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you.
The next one is the committee recommends the council adopt the Falls North Small Area Plan as amended by the attached documents. That's a motion.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second to adopt the Falls Lake... The Falls North Area Plan. I will support this. I just, you know, I've mentioned to Councilman Cox my concern about density and transit and how they may not complement based on the way I'm seeing this plan, but others may see it differently. But I will still move forward in supporting this. There any other questions from the counselors?
I just need to correct that the Growth in Natural Resources Committee will meet...
Hold on. Let me get this motion. Let me have this motion. Let me have this motion.
Sorry. I'm a little...
So, all in favor say... It's been moved in properly second to approve the Falls North Area Plan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed have the same right. Motion passes.
Sorry, guys. I was just trying to get out the right date. Growth in Natural Resources will meet Wednesday, May 29th at 4:00 here in the chamber. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Healthy Neighborhoods? Is that all?
That's all.
Okay. Healthy Neighborhoods?
To report, the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee will meet on Tuesday, May 28th, council chambers at 4:00 PM.
Okay. I just want to make... Are you... Is that it? EDI will actually meet at its regular time. I think is that 9:11? 11:11? I got it confused with the other committee with its transit. And so, it's going to be on June 25th at 11:00. Transportation will be meeting May 28th at 3:00 in 305. At 305, at 3:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay. And no... Nothing to report out. We will now move to mayor and council. Councilman Cox?
Yes. I have three items. One of them has to do... Is related to the Falls North Small Area Plan. So, that plan actually adopts a parkway for the Falls of Neuse and part of Raven Ridge Road. That unfortunate... And the reason it's only part of Raven Ridge Road is because the other part is... Was outside the study area for the small area plan. And so, what I'd like to do is have staff come back with a comp plan amendment to change it so it's consistent throughout that entire segment. It runs between Durant Road and Falls of Neuse. It's three quarters of a mile long. So, right now, the way it is, is that half of that is urban thoroughfare and the other half is parkway. And I'd like to have a comp plan amendment to make that all parkway, consistent with what we just adopted with the small area plan. Similarly, the study area ended at the Neuse River. And north of the Neuse River, even though this is a suburban area, Falls of Neuse is designated as urban thoroughfare. And I'd like to see a comp plan amendment to make that parkway as well from the Neuse River to Capitol Boulevard, so it's consistent throughout the entire corridor.
So, you're asking to initiate two comp plan amendments?
Or one, depending on...
Can I... Thoughts from council members or staff? You have?
Those could be brought forward as a single amendment.
Okay.
If that pleases the council.
Okay. And there's the bandwidth to add this one?
There's no rush for it.
Okay. There's no rush. Okay. I just want to make sure there's no rush because I know there's a list of things. So...
What's the name of the street?
So, the first one would be Raven Ridge Road between Falls of Neuse and Durant. And then, the other is Falls of Neuse from the Neuse River to Capitol Boulevard.
Okay. Is that any form of a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. So, it's been moved in properly second to initiate a comp plan for said items. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Okay.
Okay. So, my second item is... I'll just read what I wrote here. "I recently met with Ames Simmons from Equality NC to discuss issues related to the LGBTQ community. One of the areas we discussed was the need for a police liaison to the LGBTQ community. From the December 21st, 2018 manager's update, there is a report on this issue. According to the update, the Raleigh Police Department has a community liaison officer that supports community groups throughout Raleigh, including the LGBTQ community. This community liaison officer's contact information is provided on the LGBT Center's key volunteers webpage. And so, my request on behalf of Mr. Simmons is, could we provide this information as well on the city's webpage?"
We can certainly look into that. I need to look more into that and check with the Raleigh Police Department. Is the specific question to list their contact information on the website?
Well, the same information is listed on... So, it's the community liaison officer's contact information is provided on the LGBT Center's key volunteers webpage. So, even though it's on the LGBT Center's webpage, the request is, could it also be somewhere on the city's webpage so that people can easily find it?
Yeah. Let me just look into that with our staff, and we'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Now, the third item, this is my last item. And about a month ago, staff and I met with residents who live adjacent to and near the soccer fields on Perry Creek Road. The residents met with us to discuss various issues that have arisen with the growth and success of the soccer fields. In attendance was also a representative of the football club that organizes events at the soccer fields. And we had a very good conversation. During that meeting, we heard a range of concerns. Those concerns included lighting, noise, hours of operation, buffer setbacks, uses beyond the games themselves, and traffic. The representative from the football club noted that some patrons have trespassed on the backyards of residents and actually confirmed that some have used that opportunity to relieve themselves. There have been issues with noise, sometimes late into the evening from a maintenance shed constructed adjacent to homes where loud diesel-operated equipment is used. During tournament days, residential streets are packed with parked cars, often also parking in spaces reserved for townhomes in the area. At this point, planning staff has done and has provided an analysis of regulations for sporting facilities in other cities and have previously provided a report to council. What I ask today is that we allow staff to explore options for a text change that could help to mitigate these issues that have come to light from the residents of Perry Creek Road. The goal of the text change in particular would help to guide development of future sports facilities in the city. And so, I make a motion to ask staff to not bring back a text change, but explore options for a text change.
Second. All right. It's been moved in properly second. Any questions from other council members? I mean, for me, what I'm hearing, you're just asking for information.
Options for... You know, what could be the possible options for text changes that would mitigate these concerns? And staff met with the residents, so they have notes on what these concerns are. But they generally include the categories of lighting, noise, hours of operations, buffers, setbacks, traffic, and uses beyond the games themselves.
Would you be open to a friendly amendment of them bringing back text change or some other option?
Such as?
I don't know. That's why I'm saying I'm giving staff the leeway to say text change or some other option.
Well, in my discussions with staff, we've only discussed about bringing back a text change.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, is it possible there could be another option besides a text change? I'm only saying that because I know how long text changes take. There may be something that may...
Well, there's no urgency. I mean...
Okay. Okay. Just asking.
I mean, I just want to initiate something.
All right. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who have the same right, motion passes unanimous. All right. Councilman Stewart?
I have just one thing. May is Bike Month. Go. Yay. Yay. Bike Month. And there have been a lot of great events and awareness going on. In addition, we're seeing, I think with springtime and folks being out more, we're seeing and hearing about an increased amount of parked cars and obstructions in bike lanes. And I wondered if we could get some ideas from staff on how best to message our rules around bike lanes to the community through a communications campaign or otherwise.
Yes. We'll get you a report on that.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
That's all. All right. I had something, but I forgot my other notebook, so I will send an email to you all, so I have no report.
I just have one thing. Thank you, Mayor Pratim. Motion regarding further direction for West Street. I appreciate last Tuesday's joint presentation by staff in both the Planning and Transportation Department about pending and proposed land use impacts in the Warehouse District. While there was an optimistic view of the viability of West Street to receive future state funding, I'm worried about the uncertainty that the timeline creates for decisions that will come before the city council. I understand that we will receive an update from city staff about implementation of the last transportation bond at our June 18th work session. I'd like to ask staff to identify any opportunities that may exist to reallocate funding from within the bond or from other funding sources that would allow the city to commit funding to building... To build West Street without state assistance. Second, given the limitations of the street grid within the Warehouse District, the staff identified a number of strategies that would provide opportunities to gain additional capacity from the existing right-of-way. While we discussed the trade-offs involved in doing so at a high level, no direction was provided to staff about how our comfort to pursue any of them... I'm sorry. I'd like to suggest that the Transportation and Transit Committee investigate each of these strategies at a deeper level to identify any strategy that we could recommend additional staff work for development of that.
So, I understand your... First of all, there's... That was a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, there was a motion.
Second.
Okay. So, it's moved in second. Underwriting this, I understand the first request. The second request, can you repeat that for me again?
Want me to read it to you again?
Yeah.
Second one. Given the limitations of the street grid within the Warehouse District, the staff identified a number of strategies that could provide opportunities to gain additional capacity from the existing right-of-way. While we discussed the trade-offs involved in doing so at a high level, no direction was provided to staff about our comfort to pursue any of them. I'd like to suggest that the Transportation and Transit Committee investigate each of these strategies at a deeper level to identify any additional strategies that we could recommend additional staff work and development.
Okay. So, I know we gave direction. We identified some intersections. You're not talking about that part?
No. You remember some of the things they talked about? Maybe we could remove some parking places now and use that as a capacity building. It was just for us to have a little deeper dive since we didn't have any clear direction about where to go.
Okay.
So, money and flexibility.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. All right. It's been moved in properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right. Motion carries.
I'm sorry, that was a long one, but...
You took Thompson and my... Well, you took Thompson, my Tom, and Russ's, so you're fine.
Yeah. I just have one thing. I'd like to ask council to authorize the Planning Department to work with urban forestry staff and the city attorney's office to identify and evaluate possible incentives for preserving or replacing trees in infill development situations.
So, you're asking planning... Repeat it one more time.
Planning, urban forestry, and the city attorney's office to identify and evaluate possible incentives for preserving or replacing trees in infill development situations. I've met with the Planning Department and with urban forestry staff to discuss this, and Jim Green discussed it with the city attorney's office. And everybody seems to think that's the way to go, so I'm hoping we can do that since we get a lot of concerns expressed about, you know, making sure we can preserve our tree canopy.
So, may I ask, are you asking that we look at our current policy that we have in tree conservation policy to ask us to relook at it? Is that what you're asking?
Well, it doesn't really have any incentives in it, like to encourage if you're doing infill development, there's no incentive for preserving a tree or replacing trees if you cut down a whole lot, a whole bunch of them. And, you know, people are tending to go in and bulldoze and clearcut the lots.
Because they can.
Right. Because they can. And I don't think we... I don't think we want to... I don't think it would be wise for us to try to prevent them from doing that because... Well, there are lots of reasons, but I think if we can find ways to incentivize them to save trees or replace trees, that would be where we'd want to go.
So, Mrs. Mendel, before I vote on that, I have a question for planning as it relates to our tree conservation policy. So, can we currently have a policy where if it's less than two acres, you have to keep a certain amount of trees? Anything less than two acres, you can clearcut. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is... Her question is, do we want to incentivize? My question is, can you incentivize something when you have a clear policy that's already existed?
Okay.
And I want to save trees.
I think the first question is pertains to authority. Is there any authority to regulate the removal of trees on properties outside of historic districts where there is clear authority?
Right.
Outside of less than two acres? So, my understanding has always been that the answer to that question is no.
Okay.
Where you don't have the authority to regulate something, though, there's nothing stopping you from building an incentive mechanism into the ordinance that would provide, say, relief from one standard in return for tree preservation. Now, whether that would be effective or not would kind of depend on a side-by-side basis as to whether the thing being proffered as the incentive was worth more to the builder than the ability to remove the tree. So, I think at this point, this would be a very exploratory conversation, both revisiting the question of authority as well as looking at the current infill standards. Is there anything that we could provide relief from in those standards in return for tree conservation? Now, whether or not the council ultimately decides to adopt an incentive. And I'll just give an example, you know, front yard setback. Perhaps we could give you relief from the front yard setback contextual standards if it resulted in the conservation of a tree of a certain size. But, you know, I think that that is something that we could explore, and I... As I stand here right now, I can't tell you whether we'd be able to come up with something effective or not, but we could certainly look at it.
Okay. I just wanted clarity on that.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. He hesitated, but I heard a second.
I wanted to be sure it was a motion.
Alright. It's exploratory, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right, motion carries. Madam Clerk, appointments.
Arts Commission, one vacancy, no nominees. Appearance Commission, one vacancy, no nominees. On the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, you have a motion on the floor that was made by Ms. Mendel, seconded by Councilmember Cox, to reopen nominations, and you asked that it be held, and, well, too, more people were here. So, I don't know how you want to address that.
Well, it was moved in seconds, I guess it would be a vote at this time.
The vote would be just to consider reopening nominations, not voting.
Right.
Let me move forward, I'm sorry. On the people who did vote, Mr. Neptune received three votes and Mr. Zell one.
So I just have, I can't remember why we closed the nominees, I don't remember.
You kept getting no, nobody.
Yeah, I think we closed nominees, they tried to narrow down and get the votes.
Mayor asked that they be closed because, tried to get somebody on board.
Okay.
So, have they, has it been open now? Did we vote on that?
No, you haven't voted on that motion as of yet.
Right, it's been moved in properly second on the motion to reopen nominations, all in favor.
Before we go there, let me just say, I appreciate my fellow council asking why we closed it.
I can't remember.
Appreciate Clerk's comment about thinking that would help move some appointments along. I don't think that that's being successful, so I'm going to support opening it back up and seeing if that helps move it along.
Okay.
Alright, alright.
Can I just make one quick comment?
Sure.
Quick.
I mean, we're here. So I just want to say that I think both of these individuals, Mr. Neptune and Mr. Zell, are well-qualified, and that being said, I'd, I, let's, let's get this thing done, so let's reopen it.
Alright. All in favor, aye. Go by the ayes.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right, so nominations are reopened, and those, you will take those nominations at the next meeting.
We received a nomination, if I can find it.
For Natalie Lou.
Okay. Okay.
Natalie Lou.
Yeah, it's Natalie Lou, I saw it.
Here it is, here it is.
I'm sorry. Natalie Lou has been nominated by Councilmember Mendel, so you have three nominations, and it'll carry over to the next meeting. The next is the Historic Cemeteries Advisory Board for vacancies, no nominees. Human Relations Commission, one vacancy, no nominees. Planning Commission, one vacancy. Jennifer Lampman received three votes. Cecilia Salone Flores received two votes, and Councilmember Cox has entered a new nomination, Shelley Winters. So that would go over to the next meeting. The next item, Raleigh-Durham Airport Authority, one vacancy. Nancy.
Picaric.
Received three vote, excuse, yes, three votes, and Seppi received four votes, so that will carry over. Raleigh Transit Authority, two vacancies, alternate members, no nominees.
Okay. Alright.
And, let's see if I have.
We'll go down to, well, first, before we get there, nominations, I see nothing here printed, so I guess there's none.
Excuse me?
There's nothing listed under nominations.
Quick.
Okay. So City Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Okay, you received the May 7th council, regular council minutes in your agenda packet for consideration of approval.
Alright. Minutes are theirs, I'm moved for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, surplus property, 413 Watson Street. During the April 16th council meeting, the property located at 413 Watson Street was declared surplus, and council accepted a bid of $64,000 from Team For Your Dreams Incorporated. Subject to the upset bid process, we've gone through all of the legal advertisements, there was an upset bid, and Ashkem Hosini submitted the winning bid of $100,000. Therefore, it's recommended that you accept his bid of $100,000 plus advertising costs of $886.90.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been moved in properly second, approval of surplus property, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right.
May I add two things, please? The first one is, at the last meeting, you took action to rename the Substance Abuse Advisory Commission to the Substance Use Advisory Commission. That passed unanimously, but I indicated that I'd have to check into how it was established, found out it was established by resolution, so we need to do a resolution to rename it or to confirm your action, and you received it at the table, and would like for you to consider adopting it.
A move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second, to approve resolution to rename the Substance Abuse Advisory Commission to the Substance Use Advisory Commission, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed have the same right.
And could I add one more that's money?
Sure.
This is it.
This is it, I'm sorry, but this was a good one, you get some money. At the May 7th meeting, you declared surplus portions of easement interest located at 1 Dixie Trail, 3006 Hillsborough Street and 3016 Hillsborough Street. These were drainage easements, utility and slope easements, and various easements that were acquired and left over from the Hillsborough Street project. You accepted a bid of $7,855 from the CA Student Living Raleigh PD LLC. We've gone through the process and did not receive any upset bids, but it's recommended that you adopt a resolution authorizing the sale to the CA Student Living for $7,855 plus advertising costs of $5,2490.
Okay. Surplus property sales, there, motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved in properly second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion passes.
And that's all.
Alright, thank you. City manager, you have anything else? I moved to close. I have a motion ordered to enter closed session pursuant to GS 143-118.11A3 to consult with the City Attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to give instructions concerning the handling and/or settlement of a potential claim. So move.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, we are now in closed session.
Okay, um, closed session has ended. Um, we gave council the directions you needed on the matter on within session, and we are now adjourned.